Called this meeting to order. It's now six o'clock. Tracy Long has taken the role and will rise, and Micah Hill will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing we need to do is review, revise, and approve the agenda. If there are no changes offered, could someone make a motion to approve the agenda as written? A second? Thank you. Trustee Decker and trustee Hobins. Is there any public comment on the agenda items for today? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote, and I must remember that one of our members will be voting online, so we need to keep track of that. All in favor of approving the agenda? Unanimous for all trustees present? Thank you. Next, we need to approve the minutes. The first one is the Board of Trustees' Special Meeting that was held on November 14th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 14th Special Board Meeting? Thank you, trustee Wake. A second, trustee Wollek. Are there any trustee comments on these special minutes? Any public comment on items on this set of minutes? Seeing none, we'll take a vote to approve the minutes for November 14th. All in favor? Trustee Vogel? Okay, approved by all trustees present. Next, we need to approve the minutes for November 14th at our regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, trustee Wake. A second, trustee Wollek. Are there any comments on these minutes from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll take a vote to approve the minutes. All in favor? Please raise your hands. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Approved by all trustees present. We're going to move on to item number five, which is Community Connection, given by Jennifer Courtney, who's the Big Sky High School principal. Superintendent Hill, would you make the introduction?
I sure would, yeah. We would like to welcome Ms. Courtney and some of her staff here tonight to share with you a little bit about some of the happenings at Big Sky High School, in particular, the academies that they are promoting and actively pursuing in the pursuit of excellence for their students. So Jennifer, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Superintendent Hill. Again, Jennifer Courtney, Big Sky High School's principal, proud principal at Big Sky, and with me is Jennifer Keintz. She's our academy coordinator. Of course, we have Big Sky students who I'm sure would also love to answer any questions that you have, but we're really excited to be here to just share with you this journey that we've been on really for the last 12 years. A lot of the work was done prior to COVID, and then we've stutter-stopped, if you will, throughout the last couple of years to get to this place, but we're really excited to be presenting the academies of Big Sky. Next slide, please. I want to also thank our Big Sky staff. So much of the work has required a lot of time and energy and dedication and conversations about the impact of developing four academies and what that means for our student population, our larger Missoula community, but especially our staff. They've gone through a tremendous amount of change post-COVID, and this certainly adds to a layer of excitement, but also stress and anxiety around what next, so I'm really proud to lead that staff in this next great venture that we have. We are proud to introduce two additional academies, so a little bit of history. We are in year 12 of what you probably know as the Health Science Academy. That name is going to change slightly to the Health and Public Service Academy, and I'll share a little bit more about that in a later slide. So 12 years, we've had many, many graduating classes with great success through the Health Science Academy. This year, we have proudly offered our first freshman group of the Media Business Academy, so those students are in a smaller learning community, taking classes such as Intro to Digital Design, Intro to Media Arts. They actually just did a trip down to the Coors Ranch today and had a great adventure out in the snow, and they were telling stories around the campfire, and it was a great experience of which many of those kiddos expressed they hadn't been on a field trip since they were in first grade. So keeping in mind that these kids were in, you know, fourth or fifth grade, you know, prior to COVID, so they're having these incredible experiences. This upcoming fall, so fall of '24, we will be adding two additional academies. We will be adding ACME, which is Architecture, Construction, Manufacturing, and Engineering, and Agro Sciences and Natural Resources. So incoming freshmen will all participate in an academy. We're receiving applications from families right now. We've received about half of our incoming ninth graders, and they're all excited to be choosing their academies. They've got lots of questions. We've offered parent meetings for incoming families who might wonder, what's the best fit for my child and what's the outcome going to look like? So we're really excited at these four academies. So I think some of the things that, you know, we're really proud of is that these are pathways that we already offer. Many of the things that we're doing in these four academies are not necessarily new to Big Sky. I think what the academy model does is it helps put them in a more organized continuum of experiences for students. So much of what we do is somewhat done in a vacuum, and we have incredible teachers who do and provide experiences for students, but what these academies will do is really ensure a promise to our student and family communities that they will receive all of these things that you see on the screen. So they're all going to receive hands-on experiences, they're all going to have the opportunity to receive industry certifications. Many of our students take advantage of that right now. We have students that are completing CNA certification through Miles Community College. We have students that have completed phlebotomy. We have OSHA certifications. All of our ninth graders complete the First Aid and CPR certification, so we're taking that and exponentially increasing the amount of opportunities that our students will have to ensure that every Big Sky graduate will be able to have a resume that's full of experiences that we like to say give them a leg up in whatever the next, you know, pathway is for them. We also are really excited about the dual credit opportunities. I would say that in my tenure at Big Sky, so I've been principal, this is my sixth year, I've had more conversations in the last five or six months with our community partners than I've ever had before. We just had a meeting last week with Missoula College with Grace Gardner and Tom Gallagher, who I feel like are championing behind us, and it was interesting because they said to us when they heard that we were partnering with UM Western to offer an early childhood course, they kind of perked up and said, well, what can we do to offer that course? And so it's kind of exciting to see some competition also happening within the university system. They're seeking our students and want to make sure that they're providing opportunities to our kids as well. The next slide, before Tyler moves ahead, this was produced by a group of our students that, while they're not necessarily in the Media Business Academy, because these pathways already exist, these are two of our current Big Sky students, Hayden Keintz and Kayden Easter, who developed this marketing tool. This was shown to all of our middle school students and families, as well as we have met with all of our feeder middle school staff members, to make sure that they're carrying the torch, if you will, of information to ensure that their families and their students have the right information to make best choices. So love for you to take the next couple of minutes to watch the Academies of Big Sky video.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kayden Easter. Welcome to the academies of Big Sky in Missoula, Montana. I'm a junior in the Media Business Academy studying photography and sports class.
I'm a junior in the acting academy studying field arts.
I'm a junior in media at the academy studying marketing and entrepreneurship.
I'm a senior high school student. Jerry Dean and I have decided to get really involved in high school as an academy advisor.
I have access to the academic faculty and student leaders.
They will ask towards the very interacted community and share experiences with the international body.
I'm a graduate of Asia Pacific American High School.
Go to class.
You can practice at the school.
I'm a graduate.
But we really use our great equation that we regulate. I really want to come back to our path to class.
But what if I was supposed to go out what you work for and what you really need to know after I school?
And that's what the career capital model is all about.
Making your own choices.
All that, really, will be there in the system.
Best preparation for real life.
Your sufferance, you get to choose the cabinet of best physical systems in your life at the academy.
You choose your academy and your pathway for the next four years. I often like choosing your college and your major with a little more flexibility.
More something that answers you. Maybe that's marketing or culinary, the media and business academy, or construction in our academy academy.
Maybe you want to explore healthcare or agro sciences at our health and health service academy, or agro sciences and natural resources academy.
The school works professionals in their community. If people want to go study in production, we have a program for the medical school.
Make sure that they have the right curriculum and the skills that they do.
You'll learn by having a real problem with experience with found jobs on your pathway.
It's called positive learning.
And you'll show your learning through your actions, your experiences, doing something real and yours taking in.
But don't worry, if you discover studying mental health gives you a headache, you've always changed it.
There's just something that everyone gets from another way academy or pathway you choose.
You can call it a career or field or a path or things.
Because you have other experiences. There's also something called to write your profile, as I have promised, there's school makes you.
So it's not how do we compare to that on like after high school, what do we call Career ready, maybe ready, capital ready.
Some of those things don't work.
But I think the career capital does mean in high school.
Career academy has to be the same state there as other high schools, so you don't have to take those English and math classes.
But we have four camps that say I really need to honor some of the most precious assets and earn their special privileges.
Look at the things that make high school love high school.
Girl actors sports, performing onstage, working in a school store.
Look, they'll be lost when they are too big for their pathway.
The school officials, the academy men.
Higher attendance rates.
People with disciplinary issues.
Higher graduation rates.
For you, who's being in charge of your education.
Could it be you learn the work in the real world and you're not prepared for what is ready to take your next step?
It happens to be a real high school education with all of our experiences of traditional life, with more elements for future and choices to change.
And that's what the career capital is all about.
We also like to have fun at Big Sky, too. So as we proceed into the next few slides, so go ahead, Tyler, I just want to share with you a little bit about what each academy has to offer. So you have in your packet the programs of study in each of the academies. As I mentioned, there are 12 CTE pathways that are encompassed amongst the four academies, but really what I think is special about the academy model is it provides each student with a smaller learning community. You will often hear us use the term "students are cohorted together," so in the freshman year, for example, they will be cohorted or in a smaller learning community with their English class, their science class, and their pathway class. What that means is that students will start to have these real aha moments of why they're learning certain subjects. It also provides teachers an opportunity to have that collaborative time. So for example, in our Media Business Academy, our three teachers, our pathway teacher, science and English, did one project together with their students. So they had them do science research, they used technical writing that the English teachers supported with their classroom standards, their learning intentions. The science teacher had their science standards of which they were covering, and then the pathway teacher, the media teacher, was helping them to develop their logos and their lab reports and the things that would demonstrate the outcomes of this particular project. So students felt a sense of relief to have one project in which standards from three different courses were covered. Next slide. Each academy also offers, as I mentioned, dual credit certifications as well as job shadows. So this is our ACME Academy. We're very strong in our engineering right now. We're following Project Lead the Way, so both in our biomedical and our engineering program, we use the Project Lead the Way, which is a nationally recognized curriculum and set of standards, and so our students are walking away with opportunities, again, that leg up for whatever post-high school plans they may have. We're partnering with Montana Tech right now to offer dual credit in our Civil and Architectural Engineering class, so as we grow those partnerships with the university systems, our students will hopefully be able to walk into a college setting with courses behind them and potentially have that ability to, you know, take advantage of higher-level coursework that they wouldn't be able to do maybe their freshman year of college. Next slide. I had mentioned, too, the CNA phlebotomy. We are working in partnership with Miles Community College for our CNA right now, so our students are going to have an opportunity to travel to Miles City. They're going to stop in Butte along the way and have a chance to do work-based learning, so they're going to experience some hospital settings along the way as they travel to Miles City. Jen, our academy coordinator, was able to just receive a hospital bed from St. Pat's today, so while we're partnering with these community organizations and universities, we're also in the process of building our own facilities to be able to offer these classes to our students at a much lower cost. Next slide. And then, of course, we have our A and R, our Agricultural and Natural Resources. If you haven't been to the Ag Center, that's of course going to be an integral part of this particular academy, but what this also does is it increases the environmental science side of things. We will be offering the IB Environmental Systems in Society, so there's also a really nice partnership with our A and R Academy as well as our ACME Academy, so that students who may be interested in the natural resources could also be taking engineering courses and have that, you know, foot in the door with industry and be able to demonstrate those skills, the data collection, research, that kind of thing. Next slide. These are just a few of the examples that I've mentioned with opportunities beyond the classroom. We really pride ourselves in the experiential learning. We call them adventures. So the trip for our MBA students down to the Coors Ranch had an opportunity to do an adventure. Our Health Science Academy students are going to be traveling to tech. That's an adventure, so we really try and make sure that everything that we're doing is purposeful and embedded in the standards that we hope that students will learn during those experiences. Career exploration, college visits, job shadowing. So Jen, right now, as part of her job, puts together hundreds of job shadow experiences, so our students receive two job shadow experiences in their junior year, one in their senior year, and it can be in any field that they're interested in. It does not have to be specific to their academy. We have many of our Health Science Academy students who are interested in more of an art field or in technology or in cybersecurity. Jen works really hard to find as many community partners as she possibly can. It's time-intensive, but the students, I think, would come back. Atsara's probably done her job shadows and could acknowledge that it's been a tremendous experience. We're also looking at internships. We are setting up a meeting with one of our local plumbers' unions. They're interested in offering apprenticeships for our students to open up the world for them, to see what being a plumber might look like, and then just those quality career experiences. So our other goal is to keep our students engaged all the way through their senior year, and we have many students right now that see their senior year as only their required classes and would like to just be out working. While we see benefit to that, we'd really like that to be in a field or an area that's going to help them grow their resume and ensure that they've got, you know, that next step pathway outlined for them. Something else that we really pride ourselves in is being an IB school or International Baccalaureate. I've mentioned dual credit several times, but one thing that we are really, I think, again, I use that word "pride ourselves" in, is we're an IB for all school, meaning that all of our students take IB. They take IB English as juniors and they take IB English as seniors. We have 167 students who are sitting for IB exams. If they score high enough, that means that those students will receive college credit. It's another pathway to receiving dual credit. We also offer IB Social Studies at the junior year, and at the senior year, we offer both IB and Government. What's also really nice is I've been partnering with Flathead High School and talking to them about how they run their IB program and how do they ensure that their students have all the experiences and opportunities that they should have as both an IB learner and a graduate of Flathead High School. So I was actually just in communication with them today about their IB Global Politics class and how that's offered for their seniors and that their students take their government class, either 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, so making sure that we're offering those opportunities to students so that they can leave Big Sky High School with those dual credit opportunities while meeting all of their graduation requirements. We met today as a math and counselor team, and now all of our graduates will be able to receive dual credit in math. So it's not this or this. All students will have the opportunity to receive anything from 105, 115, 121, 162, or 171, depending on what class they graduate with. That's pretty exciting that all of our graduates will receive a dual credit in a math class. We pride ourselves, too, in all of the other IB offerings. You know, we have many diploma candidates, but arguably, I would say, the 167 students who are sitting for IB exams, that's a pretty incredible number as a Title I school, ensuring that all of our students have an opportunity to see themselves as higher thinkers and college-bound is pretty exciting. Next. You saw in the video some of the things that were mentioned. This is the College and Career Continuum, so these are those promises that we make to students. I mentioned that a lot of these things are happening already at Big Sky, but these will be things that students can check the box and say, yes, these things happened all throughout the course of my four years as a student at Big Sky, and it's not a matter of having the right teacher or being in the right program. There's a guarantee that all of these things will happen. Additionally, we have academy coaches, so each one of our four academies has an academy coach. That's a teacher in our building that is partnering with administration, with Jen, our academy coordinator, to ensure that all of our teachers are making sure to provide these experiences for our students. We also will have what we call a global coach. That's a teacher who is helping to ensure that even if you're not a teacher in an academy, that you understand what's happening in each of our academies and can be a part of the experiences. So using the Coors Ranch as an example, it would be pretty incredible if maybe our art or our music folks were able to join that field trip today and be a part of those experiences, even though they may not directly be teaching within an academy. Next. And then this is our graduate profile. This is, and the district has also worked on a graduate profile, and I think they're a really nice partnership. These are really quantifiable things. We want our students to graduate with at least a 22 ACT, so this is the promise back to students to say, we're going to work really hard and we're going to make sure that all of our learning intentions and our success criteria are meeting the outcomes of having a 22 or higher on the ACT. We want high attendance rates. We want kids to feel like what they're doing in school is relevant and it's rigorous, making sure that students are behaving and they're on track for graduation. We want our students to continue to complete those IB courses and/or other dual credits, and we want our students to also be participating in co-curricular, extracurricular, and athletics. We want well-rounded students to graduate from Big Sky High School, and the Academies of Big Sky can help ensure that those things can happen for our students. So I just want to say thank you so much. This has, again, been a tremendous amount of work for our staff and for our community, but we're really excited about the next steps and what this is going to look like for our students, keeping in mind that we are four years away from our first graduating class of the academies of Big Sky, so we'll be, I'm sure, making lots of changes and taking suggestions all along the way. But with that, I would say appreciate your time and answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone from the board have questions? Um, Whitcher? Got that part?
Thank you so much. This is an amazing opportunity for our students. What percentage of Big Sky students are enrolled in the academies?
Right now, we have about 250 students in the Health Science Academy, and then we've got about 50 students in the Media Business Academy. So we only have those two right now, so we have a full four-year sequence of Health Science students and then just a freshman class in the Media Business.
Other questions? Trustee Decker?
Hi, thanks for this. It's exciting to see this come back into a conversation about really expanding how this might go. I remember conversations literally 15 years ago about some of this. I am curious about the, this very ambitious and exciting set of goals around the graduate profile, and I'm wondering if you have, like anecdotes or data from current academy attendees at Big Sky that is showing that this is really the pathway that we're going to be able to see should we go this way?
That's a great, yeah, that's a great question. I think one of the challenges that we've run up against has been not having probably the strongest communication with our feeder middle schools. I think there has been, in my experience, an idea around what academies are, that it's meant for a certain type of student, so arguably, I would say that most of our Health Science Academy students are, they are college-bound, they are able to meet rigorous standards. Many of them are students that are in pre-calc and calc, and so what we saw this year when we added the additional academy was that the middle school counselors and families, too, didn't have the right information from our end to understand that academies are actually meant for all students. So what typically would have been a group of 90 freshmen in the Health Science Academy, and we anticipated 90 students or so in the Media Business, we had 90 academy students split between Health Science and Media Business. And so that was a good moment for us to realize that our communication and how we talk about academies needs to change and making sure that we do our best to get into the middle schools, to talk to the teachers, to talk to families. We need kind of a road trip, if you will, to ensure that all students understand that this is actually meant for every single student that walks through those doors, and the term "academy" is not meant to be held at a different standard than a non-academy would be. So to answer your question, I would say yes, many of our Health Science Academy students meet that data point right now. What we want to ensure, too, is that all of our students have an opportunity to get their first choice, so their applications actually ask them to rank order of the four academies. We also sent with our eighth graders career clusters inventory so that they could take that inventory, have those good conversations with family members or their school counselor, and also recognizing that not every kiddo may be talking with their parents about this, so trying to have some other ways to communicate to kids how they can make choices so that when they submit their application, we know where they fall. We also ask them, what do you want to be when you grow up? And it's been really neat to see kids coming back and saying, I want to be a professional athlete, or, and we don't ask kids a lot, those questions anymore, and so maybe they might not be a professional athlete, but to talk to them about being in a sports marketing class and maybe going to work in a marketing field for, you know, Montana State or the University of Montana is pretty cool to have those kind of conversations and get kids excited about their academics that maybe we aren't seeing currently.
Other questions from the trustees? I actually have two myself. One, and I'm sure you've already seen this, but I just wonder how a student can come in perhaps and say, oh, I want to do the agricultural one, but then they change their minds, and whether there's a loss when they say, oh, I've changed my mind, I want to do media instead.
Right, yeah. Thanks, great question. That's also a true, you know, sentiment for a student who maybe transfers to Big Sky and they're a junior and they haven't taken some of the prerequisite classes. I think what's important is that we're not trying to lock students into making a decision. Even though I say it's great to ask kids what they want to be when they grow up, I don't expect a 13- or a 14-year-old to know what they want to be when they, I don't know what I want to be when I grow up. And so I think it's important for us to be flexible. If a student comes in and decides, this isn't for me, I didn't enjoy this particular class, we make changes and we allow them to go in and out of academies. There are certainly courses that would be more challenging. If a junior comes in having not previously taken welding one or two, to try and get them into welding one or two could prove challenging, but the other side of that is that these smaller cohorts, so in any given year, they are cohorted or in a smaller learning community with three courses. Freshman sophomore, it's English, science, and their pathway. Junior, senior year, it's English, social studies, and their pathway. They're still going to have that cohort, so if a student moves in and maybe they're not interested in taking some of those courses or they can't fit it in their schedule, but we find out that they're interested in natural resources, they'll still be in that cohort of English and social studies, still afforded an opportunity for job shadows, certifications, dual credits, all the other things that would come along with being a part of an academy, they just may not take some of the courses. Or if a student is, you know, in advanced orchestra and they can't fit all the things and a language, they're still going to be cohorted together in those other courses and have those experiences, job shadow certifications that Big Sky promised, they'll have those irregardless if they've taken all of the coursework.
And then my other question. It looks as though in nine, well, in all four years, you do have Language Arts, Science, Math, and Social Studies. There was a question in a letter that we received asking about civics and government, and I see you have Social Studies elective. What's the range of electives in that particular area?
Yeah, and part of why that's outlined the way that it is, too, is that we certainly could have just put graduation requirements, which for Social Studies would be two and a half credits. We want students to be taking four years of every academic area that they should be taking. I would love to see kids having to take four years of math, four years of Social Studies, four years of science. So part of that is in the way we can
Other questions from the trustees? I actually have two myself. One, and I'm sure you've already seen this, but I just wonder how a student can come in perhaps and say, oh, I want to do the agricultural one, but then they change their minds, and whether there's a loss when they say, oh, I've changed my mind, I want to do media instead.
Right, yeah. Thanks, great question. That's also a true, you know, sentiment for a student who maybe transfers to Big Sky and they're a junior and they haven't taken some of the prerequisite classes. I think what's important is that we're not trying to lock students into making a decision. Even though I say it's great to ask kids what they want to be when they grow up, I don't expect a 13- or a 14-year-old to know what they want to be when they, I don't know what I want to be when I grow up. And so I think it's important for us to be flexible. If a student comes in and decides, this isn't for me, I didn't enjoy this particular class, we make changes and we allow them to go in and out of academies. There are certainly courses that would be more challenging. If a junior comes in having not previously taken welding one or two, to try and get them into welding one or two could prove challenging, but the other side of that is that these smaller cohorts, so in any given year, they are cohorted or in a smaller learning community with three courses. Freshman, sophomore, it's English, science, and their pathway. Junior, senior year, it's English, social studies, and their pathway. They're still going to have that cohort. So if a student moves in and maybe they're not interested in taking some of those courses or they can't fit it in their schedule, but we find out that they're interested in natural resources, they'll still be in that cohort of English and social studies, still afforded an opportunity for job shadows, certifications, dual credits, all the other things that would come along with being a part of an academy, they just may not take some of the courses. Or if a student is, you know, in advanced orchestra and they can't fit all the things and a language, they're still going to be cohorted together in those other courses and have those experiences, job shadow certifications that Big Sky promise, they'll have those irregardless if they've taken all of the coursework.
And then my other question. It looks as though in nine, well, in all four years, you do have language arts, science, math, and social studies. There was a question in a letter that we received asking about civics and government, and I see you have social studies elective. What's the range of electives in that particular area?
Yeah, and part of why that's outlined the way that it is, too, is that we certainly could have just put graduation requirements, which for social studies would be two and a half credits. We want students to be taking four years of every academic area that they should be taking. I would love to see kids having to take four years of math, four years of social studies, four years of science. So part of that is in the way we communicate that we want students to be taking four years of academic coursework. I mentioned the communication I've had with Flathead High School. IB is, can become a challenge when students want to take IB coursework and can't fit all of the things in their schedule. So for example, if we have a student who right now is a Health Science Academy student and an IB diploma candidate, it's very challenging for them to fit anything besides those two programs into their schedule. So government right now is a course that is offered to the majority of our seniors. The way Flathead runs their program is they offer it, it's required as a graduation requirement, but it's allowed to be taken 10th, 11th, or 12th grade year. They also offer it as a zero-period course. So for a student, as I mentioned, a Health Science Academy IB diploma candidate that can't fit it in their periods one through seven, then they might take it as a sophomore during their zero period. The seven-period schedule can prove challenging when trying to fit all of those things in there, but as I mentioned, trying to be flexible. So if there's some things that have to give a little bit, or we push our students to take maybe their art coursework during their freshman year, we may have to pause and push that during their junior or senior year so that they can fit all of the other requirements into their schedules. So government will be something that, you know, students will graduate with. It can also be embedded into the IB global politics, that's how Flathead runs their course. Those are conversations that I'll have with my social studies department to make sure that they feel confident and comfortable with the decisions that are made.
Do we have any questions from people sitting as public? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
So just to be super explicit, anyone going through this has to meet the normal 24 graduation.
Absolutely, correct.
And now, do we have any questions from the public?
I don't think we do public comment.
Okay. With that, we are moving on to public comment. There were additional letters that were included in our agenda, and additional information has been posted on the website. But now we'll open it for public comment regarding non-agenda items. Because of the way this is set up, each speaker gets three minutes, and the public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. However, we don't have the opportunity to make a board response or for the public to ask questions. We ask that you do not infringe on the right to privacy of others, and we ask that you also sign in and spell your first and last names. As I said, comments are limited to three minutes, and I will let you know when you've reached your three minutes or if there are some statements that are out of order. Thank you.
We do have public comment tonight. First up is Sarah Hickey. Joshua Nichols coming up first. Please sit at the little table, turn on the microphone, say and spell your name and write it down on the little sheet.
My name is Joshua Nichols, and I'm a Northside resident. Before I say what I have to say, I just want to address all of you and say how much I appreciate all of you serving in the capacity you do. I can only imagine the amount of time and dedication it takes to do that, and it's reassuring that people care about their community enough to be up there like you all are, so thank you. I'm a Northside resident. I have two students, two children who are students at Lowell Elementary School. Our life revolves around that school at this stage of our life more than I ever imagined it would. It's the center of our lives. And I'm going to read from a letter that a group of parents has put together and that we're gathering signatures on, we're going to formally submit it later, but we wanted to read it into the record tonight, so. Dear Board of Trustees, we are a concerned group of parents who write you today because teachers, staff, and students at Lowell Elementary need your attention and help. Lowell Elementary School's student enrollment increased by more than 50 students this year, a significant increase for any school, but particularly challenging for a Title I school already facing unique challenges and stresses on staff resources. Enrollment is certain to continue to increase as construction on the largest affordable housing development in Montana history nears completion on the North Side and families begin moving in. The children who move into those apartments and other housing developments on the North and West Side will soon join the Lowell Elementary School community. The district must be prepared for this influx of new students and make sure Lowell has the resources it needs to address the needs of these additional students. If the district waits too long and is forced to play catch-up after the fact, teachers, students, and staff suffer. This, we are afraid, appears to already be happening. Several Lowell classrooms are near or at capacity. We recognize Lowell classrooms are not the only classrooms in the district at or near capacity, but as noted above, classrooms at Lowell face unique challenges due to the student population it serves. For example, safety is a concern when a student has a physical outburst in a small classroom packed with 30 students, and there's insufficient space for staff to maneuver and address the needs of an upset student and simultaneously assure the safety of other students. And this is just one example of many unique challenges Lowell instructors face on a regular basis. Now, we are an informal group of parents doing our best to acquire data to back our assertions and requests, but acquiring relevant data through the FOIA process poses logistical and financial challenges for an informal group of parents. For this reason, we ask that the Missoula County District, School District, one, please analyze English language learner population data, behavioral health data, individualized education plan data, student disciplinary referral data, and students experiencing homelessness data at Lowell Elementary.
It's getting close, so if you could finish.
If a couple of my peers grant me a couple of their minutes, can I finish the letter? Nope? I'll hand it off to them, okay. So my time is up? Okay, it's a very stringent rule. Thank you for my three minutes. I'll hand it off to one of my peers.
Is that Sarah who would like to come up now? Please sign in and say and spell your name.
All right, my name is Sarah Hickey, S-A-R-A-H, Hickey, H-I-C-K-E-Y. I am also a parent at Lowell Elementary School. I have three students there right now and a fourth one who is now at CS Porter. I'm just going to continue where Josh left off. Analyze current and projected enrollment data, taking into special account Lowell's status as a Title I school when comparing its enrollment to other district schools. Analyze population projections in the North Side and West Side neighborhoods in coming months and years and how that will impact the Lowell population. And talk to teachers, staff, and students at Lowell Elementary School about their experience at the school this year compared to previous years. We cannot stress number four in the above list enough. We believe if the district takes time to speak to students, families, instructors, and staff who have been part of the Lowell community for years, they will hear that this year is different. The challenges are amplified significantly this year, and it is due to a spike in enrollment and a lack of adequate resources to address that increase. The undersigned parents want to stress, and we cannot stress this enough, we do not write this letter as a criticism of the Lowell Elementary School staff or student population, just the opposite. Lowell Elementary serves as a community center for its neighborhoods and school population in ways many schools do not. Students do not get turned away from Lowell Elementary School, and we are proud our children belong to a school that can make such a claim. We care deeply about this school, its teacher, and its staff. What we fear most is that we might lose some wonderful instructors if their needs are not addressed. Lowell Elementary School provides a vital service to this community, but the support it provides this community is under stress. We ask that the school district provide the school with the support it deserves. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Lowell Elementary School parents.
Thank you.
I probably don't have much time left to say what I was going to say, but I've been a bobcat parent for about six years now, and I just want to say how significant this year, the change this year has felt. My kids have felt unsafe at school this year, they've felt scared, they've never used those words with me before. Just the feeling at the school is so intense this year, and we have, I have not felt that, my family has not felt that before. And we're worried, we're worried about our teachers, we're worried about our kids, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Laurel Sears.
I am here also in support of this letter to all of you, and I also want to express my gratitude. I feel extremely lucky that we live in a country where we have public education. I feel extremely lucky that we live in a community, in a state, in a town, in a Northside-Westside community that has such incredible caring people that take care of our kids. And I have a kindergartner, so I cannot compare my experience to other years. We have had an incredibly positive experience this year. I feel really, you know, fortunate. My student's classroom has 19 five- and six-year-olds in it and one teacher, and I think it's incredible that she can manage that. I also think it's maybe the max with two non-native English speakers, which is also an incredible experience for my kindergartner to get to learn some Swahili. I love that. I also think it's a really challenging thing for a teacher to have two non-native English speakers the first year of their public education and no real consistent help that I can see from my side. And my communication with the teacher that my student has has been excellent, and I feel, again, really fortunate, and I also can see that this is max capacity for this teacher. And so I just want to reiterate that we really want to support our teachers so that they can then support our kids, so that they can be functioning humans in our society and maybe one day do what we're doing right now. And it could go another direction, right? So I also want to say that I spent a lot of time thinking about where my son was going to go to school. We live two blocks from Lowell, and I was, I was concerned that he would be in an environment that didn't feel safe. And I've been really impressed with how everyone at Lowell works with really diverse communities. Diverse meaning everything, socioeconomic, background, skin color, everything is represented in that school, and I think it's a really positive thing for my child to get to interact with that. And it's really positive how I see everyone in that school supporting each other. I just want that to continue, so thank you for your time.
Is there anyone I did not call yet who would like to make public comment tonight? No further public comment?
Well, thank you very much. Oh, okay. With that, then we will move on to the student trustee reports from the individual high schools, and I'm not sure who all is here and who might be online, but why don't we go ahead with Big Sky first?
This, with the holiday season, we've looked, Big Sky has looked for many ways to serve the community as well as the students of Big Sky with what can be sometimes a difficult holiday season. With that, we've, our FRC is hosting the Fourth Annual Breakfast Kit Giveaway. We have 16 families signed up to get breakfast kits over the winter break, which is amazing. And as well as, our Big Sky community has helped with providing over 60 families, Big Sky families, with holiday gifts this year. We have, our National Honor Society Club is doing a local fundraiser with The Giving Tree where high school students are shopping for families with kids in need of gifts. And as well as, DUCA is providing 26 families within the community with food baskets over, which will provide them with food over break. Recently, Student Gov hosted their first town hall meeting. This was with the purpose of having a place where students could come and talk about topics, their concerns, as well as questions, as we look for ways to improve our school. It went very well, and we're hoping to have those meetings monthly. Another way Big Sky has looked to improve our school is, Big Sky Administration has implemented a policy of ticketing for parking violations. This has been a good way of ensuring students park safely as well as encouraging students to get to class on time, so they have parking.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to go into some of the athletics and some more activities. So our winter sports are in full swing here at Big Sky, and we've seen some really exciting Eagle wins. We have had our boys win against Billings West last Friday, and our girls won against senior on Saturday. This, this year, our teams, we see a lot of familiar faces, and that's super exciting, and there's a big sense of community, and that's really reflected in their game, on the court, and in their sportsmanship, which makes cheering them on really easy. The games were not just the same, though. Our cheerleaders were gone, but they were in Honolulu, Hawaii, representing Montana and Big Sky in the Pearl Harbor Day Parade in Honolulu. They all participated by cleaning up and cheering alongside teams across the country. Additionally, they had the opportunity to visit the Pearl Harbor Memorial, deepening their understanding of the anniversary. They were also along teams from across the country, which was a super cool experience for them to be a part of. Big Sky Wrestling, they finished in the top 15 out of the 32 girls in Flathead, and this year, we've had a great turnout in speech and debate, and they competed in Kalispell, they took fifth and took it to the semifinals, and we are really excited to see where they go from there. And tonight, the Eagle basketball team will face CMR from Great Falls, and the boys will play at 7:00, and the girls' team will be at home, so we're excited to see how they do.
Thank you. We have representatives from Sealy Swan. I can't hear.
Yeah, hi. I mean, my audio is good.
You sound good so far.
Okay. As you can see, we have a lot of this here. Sorry, my voice. I have a question about, you know, the, 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 the,
Good evening, everyone. So I'll just go over a bit of our old business. We had our annual Model UN Conference, where we competed against many different high schools from across Montana. And Helgate came in second of large delegation, and our students swept in the position paper category, as well as did very well in the individual General Assembly Delegation Awards. Speech and Debate has been doing some ongoing meets, and we've been performing, or competing great. NHS has been putting on many different fundraisers across the school, including a children's book drive, holiday food drive, menistral products drive, and as well as providing cooking classes for children, amongst many more. And Key Club also held their blood drive, which went successfully. Currently, we just announced, announced our theme for Golden Goat as building a legacy or construction-themed, and we released a promotional video Saturday, or Sunday night, which just is approaching, I think, fourteen thousand views, which has been a vast improvement from promotional videos in years past. We have also finalized our shirt design and are incorporating as many Helgate-based organizations as we possibly can, including coordination with art club, court, and dance team, which is working hard on choreographing our halftime show. Cheer has been briefly disbanded as our coach quit on Monday, but we are currently working on a way to repair that, especially before the Goat Game, as they are still planning on competing, or being within the halftime performance. However, they will not be going to Florida to compete at Nationals. Student Government is doing multiple projects to uplift students' mental health during the holiday season, including frosting cookies in the commons and creating holiday cards for teachers, parents, friends, et cetera, with all the supplies being provided by Student Government. Into sports, we had our first basketball game on Friday against Skyview, with the girls losing in overtime and the boys winning. And then, on Saturday, we had another two home games, playing against Billings West, where our girls lost unfortunately in overtime again, and then our boys lost by one point. And we have another game tomorrow against Belgrade with our theme being ugly sweaters, a little holiday spirit, and the girls' basketball team generously donating Donut Star student section. Our swim team just competed in Calisbell over the weekend, with our boys taking number two and our girls taking number seventh overall. Wrestling is also having a great start to the season, with last year having a total of six wrestlers, and this year expanding to twenty-two. And Helgate just won a duel for the first time in over ten years. Auditions for our spring musical, Mean Girls, are currently underway, and entrepreneurship projects are ongoing, with students holding stands, selling burritos, chargers, and other marketable goods to other students. And upcoming, we have winter break, which I know our student body cannot be more excited for. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one.
Alrighty. Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well this night. And I'd quickly like to say happy holidays to everyone here, and thank you for the candy canes. But as we slowly see winter approach, Sentinel's gearing up for many fun events and activities. Between the time from when we last met and now, Sentinel's had a lot going on. So firstly, we'll go into the sports. Girls' basketball had forty-eight girls try out this year, and they were able to fill all four teams. This is pretty significant, because there are several double-A schools across the state that are struggling to fill four teams due to just lower participation rates. According to the coach, it shows the incredible culture and student participation in sports and extracurricular activities at Sentinel, and both varsity girls, and played last Friday and Saturday against Billings Senior and Billings Skyview. The boys won both of their games, and the girls won against Billings Senior. Wrestling has also started, and so far Sentinel has competed very well in their duels. Sentinel Swim has been practicing and preparing for their next meet in Missoula on the sixteenth, which may be postponed due to the Grizz Game. But we wish all of these sports the best as they get further into their season. The Spartan Cheer Team is gearing up to head to the NCA National Cheer Competition along with Big Sky High School. And we recently just found out that the girls' soccer team was awarded the Good Sportsmanship Award for Class Double-A in MHSA, and it's an award given once per year, and it just felt really big for the Sentinel, Sentinel Girls after a long season. Sentinel also has many extracurricular activities to offer that have brought together the community. Model UN recently competed at the University of Montana, and they received many awards, such as honorable delegates, distinguished delegates, outstanding delegates, and so on. The Sentinel Choir is holding their holiday concert tonight at 7:00 PM in the theater. They recently just caroled in ugly sweaters around various MCPS schools, and they also attended the Double-A Choir Festival in early November and did amazing. According to their teacher, they're improving daily and are excited for their upcoming events. Sentinel Theater performs Shakespeare's A Midsummer Night's Dream on November sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth to a record number of audience members, and they're currently preparing for the State Theater Festival at the University of Montana in February. Key Club and Student Gov ran a successful school-wide food drive the week before Thanksgiving and also helped to can the cats. Student Gov helped run and officiate a dodgeball tournament at Meadow Hill Middle School, and they also continue to run their Lewis and Clark program, which has been going on for six years now, and helped many students. Student Gov will be sponsoring the annual fireside dance on the sixteenth and using that money to help sponsor Sentinel families for Christmas. And they are also planning the long-awaited Golden Goat Game in February, getting things together, such as t-shirts and planning the halftime show. And we also released a video on Friday, and it seemed to go very well. Speech and Debate has competed in many tournaments this year and is preparing for a large competition in now Calisbell in early January, and members are excited to compete against participants from all sorts of schools. As we approach the month of January, teachers are preparing themselves and students for final exams. Teachers have utilized resources from the community to help students prepare for a successful finals week. An example of this is the Montana Writing Coaches, who have been into work with ninety-six of our freshmen and junior students on essays this fall. Students met with volunteer coaches for about half an hour to discuss their essay outlines, and then returned them once more for an additional half an hour of instruction, and then one week later to work on their written drafts. The coaches have expressed how much they love coming to Sentinel because of its strong writing program and engaged and prepared students. Sentinel English teachers have said that the students leave the sessions armed with confidence, inspiration, and excitement to write, not to mention having made a meaningful connection with a caring adult from our community. In total, these amazing coaches from the community spent fifteen invaluable hours with students bolstering and individualizing their in-writing class instruction, and Sentinel is grateful for the longstanding partnership between MCPS and the Montana Writing Coaches. So Sentinel hopes that everyone has an amazing holiday season. We've been getting into the holiday spirit by decorating classroom doors. Themes have varied from memorable holiday movies to beautiful winter landscapes, and even New York City on New Year's Eve. And Sentinel has a lot in store for the coming months, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The second part of this will be announcements from the superintendent. Superintendent Michael Hall will report on items of interest.
Thank you. First, I would just like to point out the beautiful artwork that was on display behind us from various elementary schools in the district. It's just great stuff, so if you get a chance to check that out, I just want to call your attention to that. It's pretty impressive. Announcements, right now, some of my staff are putting together committees and interviews to look at a bell schedule audit across the district at both elementary, well, I should say, elementary, middle, and high school, just reviewing some efficiencies from staffing. They're meeting with students. They're talking about how do we meet the needs of students, parents, staff, and we're just seeking some feedback from a variety of stakeholders. So there's discussion, although never consensus, it seems like, but looking at some potential changes for next year that I just want to kind of give the board a heads-up that that's going on. On November thirtieth, we presented to the Board of Public Education for the two charter school applications. We were allowed five minutes to present on each, and then fifteen minutes of questions and answers and public comment. There were no public comment, so we got to spend a lot more time answering questions. Barbara Frank in the back of the room, who will be talking later tonight, was amazing and carries me in those conversations, so I'm grateful for that. The Board of Public Ed is going to meet in January to make the decision on whether or not to approve the charter schools. There was some generally positive feedback, but we've also been hearing rumblings that they may not approve all of them, worried about the potential cost of adding charter schools now, where I think initially, when the legislation was passed, the fiscal note on it was really low, and I think they underestimated the desire to showcase how we innovate across our schools in Montana. So we'll see what happens with that. But something that we definitely need to keep on the radar is that if the Connect Academy is not approved, we're going to need to start doing some communications with staff and families who are currently in the MOA. We serve over fifty students in the MOA right now. It's also a big part of our credit recovery model for the high school district, so it would be some significant impacts for us looking ahead. So we'll be talking about that. Speaking of the Board of Public Ed, and I wish the parents, and maybe it stayed a little bit, could hear some of the feedback that we got. We had, we hosted the Legislative Education Interim Committee, as well as the Board of Public Ed here at MCPS about a month ago, maybe a little bit less, and we were able to tour them at Sentinel in our CTE programming, also Helgate CTE programming, but then we took them to Lowell Elementary to review our community school model. And got an email yesterday, I know it was actually on Sunday, that said, "Thanks again for the help with the committee's meeting in Missoula last month. It was a good one. Lowell really blew us away." And I'm trying to put together an agenda item for their January ninth meeting, where they're asking MCPS staff to come and present to the Board of Public Ed, or I'm sorry, to the Legislative Interim Committee about this community school model. They were really impressed. And Meg was there, she got to speak a little bit to them, and so it was really just awesome to showcase all the amazing things that are happening at Lowell and the way that we support that community, literally from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and just amazing things going on there. So obviously, hats off to Barbara, who started that process, and then to Ray Cooper, the principal there, who's continuing to lead it, and the staff that's there, and of course, our partners in our community, like Parks and Rec, who, they handle a lot of things for us at the end of the day. So I got to experience a little bit of that today. We are looking closely at policy language for open enrollment bill that was passed the last legislative session. It goes into effect July one. Maybe you saw the MTSBA Question of the Week, which was, hey, what about this open enrollment bill? And then quite a lengthy response, and then a model policy. And if you read through it, one of the, there's some nuances to it. One of them was that you go into closed session to review every applicant to deny or approve attendance at MCPS. But the policy is basically, I know. We're going to have to figure some of these nuances out. But, you know, essentially, what the bill said was that school districts can't unilaterally decide not to enroll a student from a different district if that's their choice. And when they put that in place, one of the things that they, that they made abundantly aware is that the receiving, the sending district will pay the tax share, the burden, for that student to attend the other school. They kind of couched it in this idea that it was going to, you know, hopefully promote innovation, it was going to, you know, kind of create this kind of competitive model within public schools. But there's a lot of reasons why a student might choose to attend a different school or want to come to MCPS. Sometimes it's size of school. I just want my student to go to a smaller school. Sometimes it's, I have three kids and I work as a teacher at Bonner Elementary, and it really, it really makes my life easier if I can just take my kids with me. So there's a lot of that that's going on. But it's something that we'll put in some draft policy, and then we'll bring it forward to the board, so just keeping you up to date on that. Another legislative requirement that we're working on is the personal finance requirement that the legislature passed, which basically becomes an unfunded mandate that school districts must require all students to take at least a half a semester of personal finance. MCPS actually offers quite a few courses that fit the bill as far as the course designation and the certification of the teacher, but most of those are sitting as elective, so there are personal finance electives, there's business math, there's some other things that are in there that we currently offer, but we're going to have to do a little bit of a wait-and-see with registration. But all of our current sophomores will need to take personal finance or some course that meets the OPI requirements for that, so hopefully there's no unintended consequences for districts on that. I have been with Trevor and Amy and Vinnie on a tour of the district, if you will, having conversations with staff about budget. I sent out an email a couple of weeks ago, kind of outlining some of that, and then trying to put a face and a context to the message. And so we've been sharing with our, all of our buildings. We did three today, we did three yesterday, we have two tomorrow, and so we only have five left for this go-around, but we'll continue to do that as we continue to have our discussions about budgets and those kind of things. So it's been pretty, pretty well-received, lots of questions, lots of advocacy, lots of, you know, those kind of things. So I think the board recognizes that, and as we work through our budget discussions and our budget committee, we'll continue to keep all of those things at the forefront. Let's see, Austin Knudsen, Attorney General, is coming to MCPS tomorrow. He is going to Meadow Hill Middle School, where he will be in a history class, talking with students about the role of government in Montana. So we'll welcome Attorney General Austin Knudsen. And as always, there's lots of stuff going on behind the scenes at MCPS. I have a terrific staff, and I'm grateful for all of their work that they do, making me look good, so thank you to them. They really are terrific staff, our building administrators, our teachers, just lots of amazing things going on at MCPS. That's my update.
Thank you very much. Anybody have a question, comment? Yes.
The bell audit, is that interior or are the external boundaries in play?
Describe interior and external.
Are you thinking about moving the start and end times, or is this just arranging within the day?
I think it's looking at start and end times as a component of that. It's hard to talk about how you rearrange within the day without looking at that. There are some things that we have to address contractually that play into that, but also with regard to transportation and what beach can accommodate or be willing to accommodate, and then just the challenges that have surfaced as a result of the changes. And a lot of them came as a result of COVID and doing some revised scheduling, but generally speaking, I don't hear a lot of positive with that. It seems like there's more challenges, and so we're just asking you to take kind of a holistic look at it. I know that there was some surveys that were done last year, and I think it came in about a third, a third, a third?
Yep, two years ago.
Two years ago. And so we know that no matter what, sixty-six percent of the people weren't going to be satisfied with the decision, but I think it's worth taking a look at. There's enough chatter out there about what that looks like, and I just want to be able to hear it from the people who are most directly impacted by that at the building level. But you certainly hear about it from parents with concerns about childcare and work schedules, and you hear about it from loss of instructional time from teachers. There's just a variety of things that go into that.
So I want to say, I hear about it on the other side, too, of, there will be real anger with changing it, and I guess, I wasn't here at the time, maybe Grace can speak to it, but the Board really looked at this many years ago, studied it on subcommittee, and came to this conclusive decision that we have respected, sort of, out of decisive as I think if, I think this is an important topic, so if you were going to make a change to that, it would be a hot topic.
Yeah, oh, I don't disagree. That's why we're getting stakeholder input and feedback before we bring anything to the board. So there may not be any changes, but it's worth, I think, for the people who are asking and looking at it from a constituent standpoint to say, let's, let's talk about it.
Any other questions? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. Going back to the Board of Public Ed and the charter school stuff that they're going to be reviewing, their to be reviewing, there probably will be people who will have a strong interest in the MOA turning into Connect Charter Academy. And will there be opportunity for public comment for those meetings? Is there a way for people who have strong feelings about that to make their voice heard between now and January?
There is always. When Board of Public Ed meets, they are always open for public comment. And I think hearing from trustees who support or community members who support the idea or the notion, I, I think that weighs into their decision-making. So I would strongly encourage that and we can get links out. I think it'll be via Zoom, but it could also be in person.
We're at item eight, our consent agenda. Typically, there's no board discussion for consent agenda items as these are routine ones, although if we do want to discuss when a motion can be made and seconded and move into the discussion. So at this point, I'll ask Pat McHugh, the Executive Director of Business and Operations, to talk about acknowledging student attendance agreements.
Only if you want to take it off consent. So if you're good on consent, that's fine.
Okay. Anyone want to take it off? Then we'll just move ahead. Same thing for the high school. Anybody?
You want to take a motion on the first one to a person?
Okay. You can tell I don't usually do this.
That's right.
So I want to make, ask for someone to make an elementary motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items. So move Decker and Witcher. Thank you both trustees. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comments on this item? Then we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I just, this was elementary only. That's why Ann did not vote. Thank you. So it passes with all elementary trustees present. Same thing, can we have a high school motion to approve the high school consent agenda? Ann Wake and Grace Decker, both trustees, thank you. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comments? If not, we'll vote on the high school motion to approve the high school consent agenda. All in favor? Thank you. It passes with all trustees present. It's now time for new business. Our first item are finance, operations, and maintenance. And at this point, we will hear from Mr. McHugh about the general fund expenditures and projection updates. And it's page 38 of our agenda where all of these charts start.
Perfect, thank you. So I'll have, actually have you go to page 39. And what we'll look at is, is a recap of our expenditures in broad brushstrokes in terms of the 30,000-foot view of where our general fund expenditures go with a little more detail than we typically see. The last time we looked at the general fund projections, we'll also look at those. We last looked at those in October after our enrollment count. And so we have some updated information that we'll talk to after we look at the, at the expenditure recap. And this recap is really instructive for looking at budgeting going forward. I mean, this is, this is where our expenditures have historically been, where there's historically, or will, will be going into the future. So if you look on page 39, the general fund is, is broken into three main categories, salaries and benefits, fixed costs and O&amp;M, and instructional program costs. And the total general fund budgeted or expenditures for, for 2023 was $42.1 million. And you can see with the 37.3 million spent on salaries and benefits that, that just about 90% is expended in that, in that category. The, if you flip the page to, to page 40, we'll take a closer look at elementary general fund salaries and benefits, this largest category that's $37.3 million. And you can see the, the various categories that we're showing, those expenditures. And when we put these graphs on the website, they'll, they'll be in color, so they'll look a lot better, they'll look more like they do up on that screen. But you can see the numbers that are, that are linked to, to the pie chart. And certified salaries, not surprising, is our largest component of salaries and benefits and, or of salaries. And then benefits are the next highest piece. So the certified salaries represent about 62% of our salary and benefit expenditures. And this is the elementary budget. If you flip then to page 41, the, the next piece of the pie chart is the fixed costs and O&amp;M expenditures. And they're sort of the big three here. You'll see the contracted services, which we'll talk a little more about utilities. We'll also look at a little bit closer. And then insurance, property liability, property liability insurance. So that's our general liability insurance coverage. And you know, these are 3.4 million in total fixed in O&amp;M expenditures. So making up the next largest piece of the puzzle. But when you look at these various components, there's really not a lot to work with as we look closer at contracted services when you start talking about places to reduce and to help balance the budget. Page 42, our instructional program costs, and still the same big pie, but really the dollars are relatively small. This is 1.2 million expended primarily for supplies and software obligations. And we'll see a little more of that detail too. So let's see if we switch to page 43. This is more the, the numbers. And I would just point out that this is a very small portion of the expenditures that are made that we just looked at. But it's sort of the, the detail that's not apparent from what, from just looking at the description. So contracted services, that, that first part, you'll see that I have a, a link to, to a, or footnote, footnote to item A at the bottom, which provides more detail. But here, this is where we pay for elections. It's where we pay for contracted services, sign language interpreters. We have our Spark Contract, our CRO obligation. We have our LifeWorks program for our staff. We also have the preschool. And so this is a bit of an oddity, but the preschool expenditure is about $400,000 and it's mostly made up of certified staff. So that expenditure is listed as a contracted service primarily because we can only use local levy funds to support the preschool. This is really a federal program. It's a special ed program that's obligated by the feds. And it's an unfunded mandate in the sense that we're obligated to serve students and we receive about $50,000 to do so. If we supplement the services that we provide, then we, we need to use local resources. So this is, we track it through this contracted services, but the, the obligation is really in the certified realm. We have copier obligations and we also have some, some support for the computer center fund that's, that's incorporated in these, in these expenditures. Utilities, another one of those big three of our O&amp;M and fixed costs is listed next. And you'll see from 22 to 23, gas, electric, and water skyrocketed. And in particular, among those three, that went up 210,000 in expenditures from 2022. It's anticipated to go up again this year. So this is a large area of fixed obligation that we have. And a fixed obligation meaning we, we have to turn on the lights and turn on the heat and provide water. So it's an obvious obligation that we have. The other pieces of, of utilities, you can see there, we listed snow removal because it's a topic of conversation. Last year, we expended 110,000 in the elementary. And I think we talked a bit about that and really about the fact that we're going to move that obligation to the building reserve for this year. The insurance, property liability is listed separately, also a big increase in that obligation over the last four years really. And you'll see it went up about 19% from the prior year, 584,000. This is general liability insurance, insurance that we have to have. We insure through a school ride property program administered by Marsh McLennan, used to be Payne West. And then the sort of instructional expenditures that are listed next, the bulk of these expenditures are, are expenditures that are made at the building level, so it's made throughout the district. The larger expenditures you'll see are for supplies, but sometimes items get charged to supplies like our obligation to amplify our, our science curriculum that's sitting under supplies. That's in FY22, that's why there's a variance there. The, the technology software also includes some, some testing software for STAR 360. Frontline is here, this is HR software and some SLP toolkits that make up sort of those amounts. Again, this is, it represents a, a very small portion of our overall expenditure budget, but it's sort of these line items, those expenditures that are a bit of a, more of a, a mystery, I guess you would say, in the, in the big, the big picture. Before I jump to the high school, I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
Any trustees have questions? I have one. I just was noticing that the food budget, if I'm reading that correctly, it really went up 534%?
Yeah, it went from $905 to $5,700. And so this is usually a result of where the item gets charged. And what we're talking about here is a staff meeting or, or snacks for the kids. And what it probably means is it was charged under supplies instead of under food. Yeah. And that's really the, a good example of maintaining context because it's a huge percentage increase, but it's, it's such a small amount of dollars we're talking about.
Any other questions? Trustee Witcher?
Can you just reiterate again where this leaves us, like how much incoming money there, there was this year and what deficit we have?
Yes, we'll get it. Sorry, for FY24? Yeah, we'll get to that coming up. Pins and needles.
Yes. Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I have a question about the preschool program. And I guess it was, it's kind of my understanding that that is a special ed program. And so I would have thought that there were special ed dollars that would come into that and that the expense being pulled out in this particular place in this particular way makes it look like it's all coming out of the general fund to pay all those salary lines. But isn't, isn't there some amount of federal funding that helps offset that cost to the district?
There is. The federal funds are 50 grand. That's the 50. That's it. And so the, the preschool program is a special ed program and, and we have lots of other special ed expenditures in the general fund. So the general fund also supports special education, as does the IDEA funds that we receive, the federal special ed dollars. So that, those funds exist in Fund 15, but both of them together support special ed services.
If I can make a comment about that. The IDEA funds were supposed to support 40-something percent and it actually supports approximately 13% to 14% of the cost.
I know, sorry, just to, I know this is a little bit inside baseball, but part B is what funds that program? And there's no federal funding really to speak of attached to that then?
IDEA part B is, that is federal funds. And the part that's preschool within IDEA part B is 50,000. That's the portion. That amount is down 10 grand from when I started, I want to say. 19 years ago. It has not changed.
In a good way.
In a good way.
Any other questions? If not, why don't you continue?
All right. So similar look on the high school. And this is on page 44. The total general fund operating budget was 33.3 million, 84% on the salary and benefit side, 28 million, and then 1.8 million in instructional and 3.5 million in the, the O&amp;M costs. If you flip the page to, to 45, you'll see that there are a few more categories of salary and benefit expenditures, but the, the, the largest again are the certified salaries and the, and the benefits. Added to that, you'll see some athletic training, equipment manager obligations. And that's, that's probably the, the, the main add there. And again, the salary and benefit piece is 28 million of that 32 million we just talked about. So, so the smaller portion of the budget on page 46 is a breakdown of the fixed costs and O&amp;M costs. Again, you have sort of this big three, the contracted services, utilities, and insurance, just like in the elementary. And again, this is a total 3.5 million dollar area. In addition to that, you'll see operating transfers out of 600,000. This represents year-end funds that we transferred to the multi-district agreement that interlocal, 560,000 of which represents the, the overall general fund transfer. And then 100,000 a transfer that, that supports individual independent high school buildings. So each of the buildings that had some discretionary dollars, general fund dollars at the end of the year, they create their own sort of carrying account in the multi-district agreement. And we'll talk a little bit about that when we look at the Sealy Lake agenda item. So again, it's the 3.5 million. You have contracted services, utilities, and, and property liability insurance is a piece of that. Page 47, you'll see the instructional programs and, and it's, it's again supplies, but not to the same degree as the, as the elementary primarily because you have the, the activity and athletic travel that's a, that's a big cost on the high school side. That's the 712,000 that's, that's there. Otherwise, supplies, equipment, software is also a, a big piece. But again, big within the 1.8 million of the $32 million budget. Yeah.
Questions? Trustee Decker?
Thank you. Is it possible to get a breakdown of that travel cost? I've just long been really curious about like how much different events and sports teams and other activities cost in terms of travel and like the number of students who are impacted by those. When you really see it broken down this way so that 39% of the instructional program costs are around travel and a significant percentage of that, from what I'm hearing, is athletic travel, I would be really curious to know the percentage of students that that travel is impacting and how that cost is breaking down.
Yeah, we have that for sure. And it's, certainly some of the detail that the committee will climb into, we've already done, had a couple of meetings and looked at further detail. I hadn't planned to recap the budget levy committee meeting stuff, but for sure, we looked at that and we've looked at that in the context of baseball as an addition. And so we can certainly dive into some of those detail, much like we have on this page 48, which is, is next. And you'll see, these are similar categories, elections, audit services, SROs, police presence, graduation, Missoula Bonin Joint, which is our athletic training service, all built within the contracted services along with the, the copiers and the computer center, much like in the elementary. So, so that's the contracted services. And again, the, the context that, that's worth looking at is the 780,000 among the 32 million or 32.3 million that's expended in the general fund. It's, it's a small piece. It's just a, a bit of a unique piece. Utilities, gas, electric, water, those, those three areas have boosted pretty significantly. You'll see gas not nearly the, to the same degree as the elementary. And the reason is that we can participate in a statewide contract, so we participate we can participate in a statewide contract, so we participate in the contract with Shell through the state because of the size of those schools. So, the north, we don't buy gas or Northwestern Energy, so it's cheaper through the statewide contract with Shell. That's why we pay less gas, that's why the increase isn't as, is great. CS Porter's the only K-8 school that we can fit on the, on the, that contract with the state. So there's benefits to, to outside contracted services. But, but still, the, the growth is 160,000 among the water, electric, and gas. The insurance property liability, 16.5% increase, 390,000 on the high school side, general liability insurance. And then you see these similar categories, primarily the supplies, the curriculum purchases, technology books, library purchases, and supplies that make up this, this remaining category of expenditures. And then page, page 49 is, is shifting gears to, to what Trustee Witcher was talking about, and that's, that's the, the look for, for FY '25. And, and so when we talked in Oc-, in October after the latest enrollment count, we gave some early projections of what the, the levy would look like or could look like and what the increase in the, in the budget could look like. And so, those numbers are, stay the same, and they'll likely stay the same until we do our February enrollment count. So if you look at the top portion of this graph, you'll see for the elementary and the high school, the, the proposed budget with an increase tied to a voted levy, and the elementary, the levy would be 166,000, and the high school would be 303.8,000. The total increase estimated at this point would be 1.9% in the elementary, so this is based upon a 3% inflationary increase, but the true increase with an over-based levy would be 1.9%. And that's, part of the factor there is, is, is enrollment. And so we're experiencing decline in enrollment on the elementary side, so even with the growth in the funding components, we're still, the increase is, is 1.9%. High school has experienced enrollment growth, so this increase is 4.3%, the 1.4 million, just putting in context. From October until now, one of the changes is the bottom line, you'll see at the bottom that the deficit is 700,000 or 692 in the elementary and 215 in the high school. In October, we are projecting 760 deficit in the elementary and 395 in the high school. The primary change is, is in the salary and benefit estimates, and, and I mentioned before, we are using exactly last year's numbers. So what we're projecting for salary and benefit increases is just for illustrative purposes only, we're showing 1% for staff that are, other than our hourly staff, which would be 20 cents per cell. And you'll see on the certified side at the top, right underneath the salary and benefit obligations to build in the budget, there are three components for certified staff, the certified step. And so if you're familiar with the salary schedule, staff as they progress down in years, they get a step, not all of them, but in each column, there are a certain number of steps that are earned. For the elementary, that 694 represents about a 2.47% increase, and on the high school, the 311,000 represents a 1.65% increase. The next item is just a straight 1% increase from, as compared to last year, so that's on the salary schedule, it's a 1% increase. And then the lane movement is a pure estimate based upon this lane movement this past year, and lane movement on the salary schedule is we have eight lanes and as staff or certified staff get credits, they move, they can move across the lanes, and they can have experience pay increases in that, in that way as well. For the elementary, that's about 0.9%, that 230,000, and then 0.7% on the high school side. So when I look at the, those three categories of increases, when you combine them at a 1%, the total increase in the elementary that I'm showing is really 4.6% when you add steps and lanes, and on the high school, it's really 3.35% when you add steps and lanes at 1%. And then you'll see the, the hourly staff impact at 20 cents per cell, they also have steps and longevity, and then the rest of the staff, it's a straight 1% with, without steps and lanes. The, the impact of this is not reflected here on this spreadsheet, but it's, it's about $610,000 each 1% increase along with 20 cents on the cell. So as we look at entering negotiations and talk more about the deficit, we'll be talking more about what those increases mean and what the impact they have on our deficits in our budgets. So that's the context on the, the projections. You'll see that the anticipated other obligations haven't changed at all, and they, they appear, really in limited ways, the ESAR funds that we need to build into the budget. This is not the, the, the expenditure of the $5 million for ESAR-related positions, this is purely ESAR dollars that are shifted to cover classroom positions. I mean, that's, so that it's a subsidy from ESAR to, to balance our general fund budget. We want to build those funds, have to build those funds into the budget. One point to note is I didn't calculate steps or 1% for, for the group of staff represented by those, those obligations there, so that, that'll boost that, that obligation when we start truly looking at the all-staff increases on the general fund side. All right, so one more slide, and this is, this is just context, but it's, it's, it's historical information on the general fund. The top half is the elementary and the bottom half is the high school. I brought it back to 2019, and I'm showing what the legislative inflationary increase has been. And you'll see that in 2019 is 1.87%, it was 0.91%, it was 1.8, 1.5, 2.57, 2.7. And then I'm estimating three for the next four years, and it, and three represents the maximum, so it's, it's supposed to statu-, statutorily be linked to prior year's inflationary increases. So if you look historically, it's not likely that we'll hit three, but if you look at what the inflation has been, we should hit three. But this is a wild card, it's what's, what's approved by the legislature when they meet, but I'm showing 3%. On the elementary side, you'll also see A and B, and A and B is our student enrollment counts, broken down K-6 and 7, 8, because those, there's different dollar amounts for the K-6 students versus the 7, 8 students. 7, 8 students get a high school, A and B, which is about $7,000, and the K-6 is about 6,000. That's seriously rounded, by the way, but for, for illustrative purposes. Two spots that I looked at was FY '21 to FY '25 on the elementary side, so FY '21 sort of represented our high point in A and B, and that's the budget year FY '21, so that's the enrollment count in February of 20, 2020, and, and the spring of 2021, no, it's not, it's the prior year, geez, tell you what. Anyway, it's right on the, right on the, the bubble of, of COVID, and so we, we did our February enrollment count, and then March is sort of when COVID came around in 2020. And, and this is, this is our high, this is 4,560 A and B K-6, 1,247 in the 7, 8. And then you jump to our estimates for FY '25, that's, that's a 307 A and B loss or enrollment loss, K-6, and 57 in, in 7, 8. And if you use those numbers, the 6,000 and $7,000 for A and B is, is the entitlements, it's $2.2 million of really budget loss, if you will. It's just, it's lack of enrollment to, to support those similar budgetary increases that, the good news is the statutory changes have allowed maintenance of budgets with inflationary increases, so the decline would look a lot worse several years ago before there's legislative changes. So that's, that's the good news, is you get to maintain and preserve some inflationary increases. The other pieces on this spreadsheet is, are, represent the max budget, this is under the funding formula we, we, we historically adopt at maximum budget. The, and you'll see that when you, when I show the adopted budget. I'm also showing the increase in the adopted budget, which is, is good to look at as you, as we go forward, our estimate here is 826, and I'm estimating at 3% that, that the budget would grow the next three years after this, after FY '25. At the bottom there is the, the anticipated levy. Now, these numbers are based upon my estimates, based upon a demographic estimates, so it's estimates on estimates, but it's, it's worthwhile to kind of look at those and look at what it, what it might be from a levy standpoint, from an increase in budget standpoint. The high school picture is better, the, the data points I pulled were FY '22, sort of within this, this, this historical look, the, the low on the high school at 3629 and 94 students, the 94 is at Sealy, and just, and this year's our estimated high, and before we start, you know, looking down the road, but that increase to this year was 363 students in the urban high school and seven in, at Sealy, so that growth represents $2.6 million on that $7,000 scale. So it, it's, it's underscored when you look in the increase in the budgets over that time, and then going forward, and going forward again, demographically, we're still looking at increases in our enrollment in the high school, but we'll obviously continue to monitor those. The voted levies stay relatively low in light of those increases. I mean, 2026 would be, I mean, a record year if that carried through, that's, that's pretty significant in terms of the inflation or the, the possible budgetary growth, and obviously you don't have to levy all of the pieces to increase the budgets, but even without running a levy, that's still $2 million in 2026. All right, so it's a, a lot to look at, but it's sort of a snapshot of what our committee's been looking at. Our committee will meet again in January, January 11th, and we'll just keep plowing through and reporting back to the board.
Are there any other questions from trustees? Just a minute, I'll get it. Mercer, Trustee Mercer.
So the October A and B count is the FY '24 here, and then it gets averaged with February?
It's, it's the FY '25, which is the budget year we're looking at, we used October FY ' '24, so we used, sorry, FY '23 and spring of FY '24 will dictate FY '25.
The October number is then under, is for elementary 4,253?
No, so I didn't, I didn't show that, I didn't show the October enrollment count, I have on a different sheet. It, it's, it's probably a better data point to look at, just because it represents actual student enrollment versus the A and B, but it's relatively the same between the years because it's, the A and B is, is, you average the enrollment count in October and the enrollment count in February, and then you multiply by a factor of 187 over 180 to give you A and B. So actual enrollment is going to be less than, than, than A and B, but it, it, it has the same relative significance as compared to the historical A and B. But the point is, is your budgets are adopted a year later, and I think that's what Trustee Mercer's saying, and it's, it's a good point.
Any other questions from trustees? And I believe I can open it up for any public comments on this item. Seeing none, we'll go on to the lease of space at Missoula County Public Schools Administration Building, and I give it back to Pat McHugh.
All right, thank you. So as many of you know, our staff and students are supported by the Missoula Education Foundation and have been so for 10-plus years, I was trying to look that up, but I know it's been quite a while. They've historically used our space, and we're formalizing the use of that space with this lease, with a lease agreement. And so the, the lease agreement basically preserves and protects the district in the form of insurance and indemnity, and, and identifies anticipated hours when the MEF would be in, in this space, in this building. But otherwise, you know, we're just, we're, we're documenting in the form of a lease what had historically been put in the, in an MOU, and the, the lease arrangement is probably, is more reflective of the relationship in terms of the use of space. So the terms of the lease are pretty standard with our other lease arrangements, other than the scope of use being limited in terms of when this building is open and occupied.
Are there any questions from trustees? Anne Wake, please.
I don't have a question, I just would like to make a statement. I'm the president of the MEF Board, and I won't be able to vote on this because of that. I appreciate the fact that the trustees are taking this under consideration and that it's a privilege for us to be able to be housed in this building, so we thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions? Seeing none, the administration recommends that we approve the lease with MEF for the use of a room to support teachers and students at MCAPS. Could someone make that motion? Trustee Decker, and seconded by Trustee Witcher. Are there any final comments before we vote? Yes?
Just that I was so glad to see this show up on the agenda. The work of the Education Foundation, of course, is amazing in support of all of the staff and students in the district, and we've been kind of swirling for a long time on the idea of that building being in use and how terrible it is for a building to not have people in it who love it and want it to be put to good use. So I was really excited to see this as a, as a really good partnership for now, in the space.
Any other trustee comments or public comments?
Thanks.
I should remember all these things. Marsha Holland, M-A-R-C-I-A-H-O-L-L-A-N-D, I'm a board member on the Missoula Education Foundation, I'm here on behalf of the board. I just wanted to let you all know that our board has already considered the lease, and we have approved it, so we're hoping that you will join in that approval tonight when you do vote tonight. I also wanted to say on behalf of the board that we really appreciate the partnership. MEF tries to do what we can to support both students, faculty, staff in many different ways, but primarily just in the classroom, having a direct impact with teachers and students, including recognizing students at the Most Inspiring Student Dinner, which is always completely inspirational, so we invite you all to that next April 4th. And I also want to thank, a special thanks to Mr. McHugh and Superintendent Hill for both working on the lease with us and for Pat to take the time to come to our board meeting and provide information and let us to ask questions about the lease terms, and also to both of them for supporting one of our biggest fundraisers. We had a golf tournament this September, and they both put together teams and came and golfed, so thank you. But, I, I wasn't going to comment on that. And also I wanted to thank both the current and retired teachers who also all came to that event and helped staff it, and it was one of our most successful fundraisers over the past three years. So thank you to all, to y'all for that kind of support, for supporting the lease, we hope, and for also just supporting the fact that we want to help improve the lives of any student and every teacher in every classroom, so continue to encourage everyone to apply for grants and to be nominated for Most Inspiring Students. Thank you.
Any additional public comments?
Hi, my name is Susan Towher, S-U-S-A-N-T-O-W-E-R, like the Eiffel Tower. And I am the, it's the only thing that works. I am the Executive Director of the Missoula Education Foundation, and I just wanted to say thank you for, well, first to the trustees for passing and voting on the MOU several years ago that initially gave us office space and a physical presence on MCPS property. And wanted to also share with you that having an office in the admin building and currently now in admin A has been invaluable to me because it, it allows me to learn, it inspires me, it, it gives me great ideas for things that we can do to support the district, even with the great art that is currently on the back wall here. It's, it just, it continuously motivates me and energizes me to continue our work and, and our support for students, teachers, buildings, anything that we can do to positively enhance a student's life in public education. And I'm a proud public school graduate, so I very much believe in the flexibility and the versatility of a public education. And we want to continue doing our work and continue our partnership with the district, preferably on site. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on this topic? Seeing none, we need to go ahead and vote. Rather, we want to support the lease of MEF for the use of the, well, the use of a room to continue the work that they've been doing so well. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And you're abstaining, I know. I'm staring at you, but you're abstaining. The motion passes with one abstention. Thank you. The next is the approve of the use of Sealy Swan Funds to pay off a loan. And again, Pat McHugh will fill us in on this item.
All right. Thank you. So about, well, three years ago, Sealy bought a vehicle, they used the vehicle, they replaced a, a two-hundred-thousand-mile Suburban with a, a new Suburban or newer Suburban. They used the vehicle to transport staff, to transport students for activities, and to, to attend functions for delivery of mail even. And so what we're asking the board to do is to approve the, the payoff of the intercap loan. This is a, a state loan that, that we signed on to back in November of two thousand and twenty. It's a variable interest rate loan, so the rates were one point five, and then they, for, for two payments, and then they went to one point six-five for the last, most recent two payments, and now they just jumped to six. Sealy has built up some of those, of their funds, preserved some funds, so they have reserved twenty-eight thousand and, that they would use here to pay off that vehicle, which we're recommending. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the trustees? Can I have a high school board motion then to recommend that we approve the use of rollover funds to pay off this debt? Thank you. Trustee Wake, a second. Trustee Wolick. Any final trustee comments before we vote? Any public comments? Seeing none, let's bring it to a vote. All in favor of approving paying off the loan, please raise your hand. Unanimous for all trustees present. Pat McHugh is on the seat again, this time to talk about open trustee positions and election dates for both the elementary and secondary trustees.
Information only. There's information on our website about the open trustee positions. It's also reflected here in the agenda. The application process opens on the fourteenth of this month, and what's required is a declaration of intent and oath of candidacy. That's also on our website. Those can be filed up until March twenty-eighth of next year, and they can be filed with the elections office or with my office. And more information about who's qualified is on the website, so I'd refer to anybody interested to look to those spots.
Do we have any questions from trustees or comments? Any public comments? Thank you very much. We'll just move on then to the personnel report. First, the elementary, well, elementary and secondary from Trevor Lebowski, Executive Director of Human Resources. I assume this is routine.
This is, in fact, routine. Unless you have any questions.
Any questions? It's in your packet, many pages. So the administration recommends that we approve the items on the provided elementary personnel report. Do we have an elementary motion? Trustee Witcher, Trustee Decker, thank you. Any comments? Any public comments on this agenda item? If not, if the elementary trustees will vote yes or no on this agenda item, all in It looks as though it's unanimous for all elementary trustees. We have a second one for the secondary schools. Do we have a high school motion? Ann Wake, thank you very much, a second. Rob Wolick. Any comments from trustees about this routine item? Any public comments? If not, we'll have a vote. All those who can vote for the secondary trustees, please raise your hand. Unanimous for all secondary, how do I say this? For everybody in the room. How's that? Thank you. Now we're moving on to the Montana Advanced Opportunity Act Grant Renewal Application. I believe Barbara Frank will speak about this. Micah, do you want to introduce the item?
Yeah, minor correction on that. My fault. It's actually going to be Ms. Amy Shattuck is going to talk about the Advanced Opportunities Grant.
Could we maybe take five? Or maybe I'll just go take five.
It would have to be a motion to recess.
Motion, take five.
Yes. I. Take five. As I'm obviously falling apart up here, yeah. So we're about to open the meeting again. We're still, are we missing one or two people? I'll just wait a second. Yes, we'll continue where we stopped.
All right. Thank you. The Advanced Opportunity Grant is funded by Senate Bill nine forty-six, oh, sorry, and managed by the Office of Public Instruction. We've had this grant for years, so this is a renewal, and it supports a number of things. Casey Durnberger, who is our CTE Coordinator, she's in the audience right there, thanks, Casey, for being here, manages, manages the grant at the district level. This, this grant, the Advanced Opportunities Grant, helps support students, high school and middle school, and their families with out-of-pocket expenses for supporting pathways for career and, and post-secondary opportunities. This grant also helps eliminate barriers for students who like to explore and would like to explore CTE opportunities, such as, as testing fees, materials, required equipment, lab fees and such. So we've had this for how many years? Four years, long before I was in this position, but this is a renewal. Thank you.
Do we have any trustee questions? Then can I have a full board motion to approve the Montana Advanced Opportunity Act Grant Renewal Application? So moved by Trustee Wake and seconded by Trustee Decker. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All in favor of this renewal application, please your hand. Unanimous for all trustees present, thank you. The next is to approve the Transformational Learning Grant Application, and our Superintendent Micah Hill will speak to this.
Thank you. And I also included a few slides to help with this. I've also asked Barbara Frank to join, as her office has helped to put together the application portion. So behind the, the slide, you'll find the actual application with some of the, the greater details. So transformational learning is kind of a big word, sometimes confused, and, and sometimes we aren't even really sure why the legislature picked that particular word, but a lot of times it can be synonymous with things like personalized competency-based education, which speaks to a, a, a style of education that you see in pockets. It certainly exists at MCPS in, in various ways, but the, the legislature in bill, or I'm sorry, yeah, in law twenty-seven-sixteen-oh-two, defined transformational learning as a flexible system of learning that is pupil-centered and that is designed to meet the Montana constitutional mandate of fully developing the educational potential of each person. And the reason why this is important is because along with the, the passage of this particular law, they passed some other ones that the board has in past action approved some policies in the district. And one of those policies is twenty-four-twenty-two, which defines what proficiency is. And I, I'm not going to read it for you, but it basically, it's saying that there is a way to assess students' mastery of skills, knowledge, abilities, and content through application or performance, and it doesn't necessarily have to mean that they sit for a test or that they are doing pencil-paper type work in order to demonstrate that. And so if a student is proficient in something, then they are deemed passing for that course. That became, that really came about during the height of COVID, when we were having students who were doing online learning and having to use other modalities to demonstrate their, their content knowledge. And then the board also adopted policy twenty-four-twenty-three, which gives the, oh, I put definition of proficiency on there twice. That was my error. But that's another policy that allows us to continue to look for new opportunities. So that gives a little bit of context to this grant. And when we talk about making shifts from the traditional industrial school model, where what we know is really efficient, we've been doing it for a hundred-plus years, it works fairly well, it helps us to organize and to systems, and we generally look at things like the agrarian calendar. Calendar committee is always a big topic of discussion, and we start school before Labor Day and end before Memorial Day, and we go from eight to three, and we do seven periods a day, fifty-minute periods, and you just kind of get this kind of, and we group everybody based off of maybe a, a number that's associated with their age, rather than grouping people according to ability or skills or, or what have you. So it, it's, it's a system that we have, and there's certainly good things. A lot of times what we find is we're trying to fit the square peg into a round hole. We see lots of things where it looks like innovation with advanced placement or concurrent enrollment classes or IB or other programming, but we're, again, we're always trying to fit it into this box that says, this is what we do for education, and it can be challenging. So there is a, another model out there of what schools could be. And our legislature is really looking at how, how they can impact this through legislation and then again through funding. So this is taking into consideration more of the student voice in, in education, rather than everything always being constantly teacher-driven. I'm the sage on the stage, I'm going to share with you all the content that I know, and then I'm going to ask you to share it back with me so that I can assess and make sure that you're proficient on the content that I know. And so it's a, it's a little bit different as you talk about it. And I'll, I'll get into a few of these things in, in another slide, but it's, you know, we can talk about the speed of learning, and an example might be, why is it that if a student doesn't master their content in Algebra I in ninety days or a hundred and eighty days, that they're automatically deemed a failure? Why can't we extend that to two hundred days? Or whoever said it took ninety days to get a half a credit? Why can't it be seventy-seven days? Like, there's a lot of things that move into this, the nuance. Like, there's a lot of things that move into this, the nuances of this, but they also create some challenges to go along with the opportunities. So, and it can even be things like physical environment. So, when I heard Jennifer Courtney talking tonight about the academies at Big Sky, this is one way that we're trying to look at how we might innovate and educate students in our district. She talked about experiential learning and competency-based education, and giving kids opportunities that exist outside the four walls of a classroom. And to me, that's just exciting. And so that kind of parlay's into the next portion of this. It's not a new concept. This has been around for decades. And if you go back into the research and you look at, you know, kind of the what schools could be, there's been a lot of conversation about, how do we change this model? But it's not, it's not easy for a variety of reasons. But some things have changed. State laws have changed. We have a legislature that actually recognizes and is promoting that. There is funding to go along with some of that change. I wish it were permanent and in a different format than the lottery system that's been created, but that's what we're dealt. It also reflects leadership change, you know, from a superintendent through building principals, a desire to innovate and think a little bit outside the box. But it also requires a board that's willing to say, yeah, we can embrace some of this. There are some things here that we actually support and that we would like to see. And one of the things that, I talked with trustees in three-on-ones, and one of the questions I asked, and it's an exercise that I've done before, but if I were to ask you just to put on a piece of paper, two or three things that would be your hopes and dreams for your children when they graduate high school, or when they leave elementary school, or whatever it is, what would you put down on that piece of paper? Just think about that for a second. What would your hopes and dreams be for your kids? And I've done this in large groups with 300 people, and I'll ask them to share out. And I hear things, I want my child to feel loved, I want my child to have empathy for others, I want my child to be well-rounded, I want them to have experiences, I want them, when they graduate, to have ideas and a fresh mind about what things could be and how they could be. And then I'll ask the question, how many of you wrote down on your piece of paper, I want my child to be a 4.0 student? How many of you want them to have a 36 on their ACT? How many of you, no hands go up when we ask those questions? And the reason is, and when you start talking to your parents, and when you start talking to your community about what do you want for your kids, those are byproducts of a quality education. There are going to be students who get 36s, and there's going to be students who get into Ivy League schools. But that's not everybody. And so what opportunities do we create along the way that helps to embrace that? And the work that Casey does with the Advanced Opportunities Act, and the funds that we get from that, all go into supporting this. And so, when we talk about it, transformational learning is not an event. It's a process. It's a conversation that has to start somewhere and then has to be able to grow and develop. And it really needs a grassroots approach. If I come in and say, hey, everybody, we're doing transformational learning, they're going to look at me and be like, what are you talking about? And then I go, well, it's defined as a flexible system of pupil learning. And they're like, what are you talking about? And so it takes a lot of conversation. And at the same time, as it is exciting to think about what it could be for my child or for someone else's child, it's also really anxiety-provoking. I guarantee you that there are people at Big Sky who are anxious about going wall-to-wall academies. It is a change of what I know and have typically done. And I worry about, how is this going to impact me? Is it going to make my work-life harder? Is it going to bring greater job satisfaction to what I'm doing? And so that's part of the excitement of it, but it's also part of the anxiety. And it's something that we'll certainly wrestle with as we move down. So when I talk about it and I look about it from a process standpoint, it really requires a shared vision. And we haven't talked a lot about that, but if you go back to the strategic plan that you developed, this is actually in there. There are elements of this that exist in the current strategic plan. But we also have to start having that conversation with our community, with our parents, with our stakeholders, our staff, and talk about what that is, and hopefully come up with, what is that shared vision? And then through that, we start to reflect and we listen, and we hear, this is what I would like to see, and this is what I would like to see, and I don't want to see this. And so it's a, there's a little bit of give and take. But the whole time that we're doing that, we're envisioning, what does it look like to be even better? What does it look like to be better than what we're currently doing? And we're doing amazing things. It is no reflection on our district. You go out to any of our schools, there are always something good happening. Our staff work their tails off. But we can always envision what it would look like to be better. And from that, you start to develop these strategic plans. And it can be site-specific. It can be building by building. And there's a slide at the end that I talk about this, the analogy that I'll use. But you develop these strategic plans for your building site. It's not going to look the same at Lowell as it is at Paxton, and it's not going to look the same at Big Sky as it is at Sentinel. And we have to be able to give that autonomy and that freedom to our staff to be able to look and create what's going to meet the needs of their community. And then we implement those plans. And through that, we start to assess and adjust. And so when I look at this as a process, I look at it as a long-term. We're talking five years. Next slide, we'll show the timeline. But through that whole five years beyond, we're always envisioning even better. What does that look like? And so that's the, that's part of what goes into this. This is funded through OPI and state legislation. And what you see on that chart is the FTE, so that's the full-time equivalent staff that we would be looking at targeting. And there's 444 on the elementary side, 301 on the high school. And you can see that if selected, and I'll talk about that in just a minute, roughly about $2.8 million a year in additional funding for the next four years, which totals out to about $11 million. So it is a significant source of funds. Those funds are generally used to help teachers be creative, innovate, talk about what they want to do in their buildings, in their classrooms. It involves a lot of professional development, it involves a lot of risk-taking, it involves a lot of things. And one of the components of this is, we're going to submit an application, pending board approval tonight, to the Office of Public Instruction. And it used to be a race. Whoever hit the submit button first was, got the money. And then they changed it up a couple of years ago, and the legislature is currently funding this through 2025. I was talking with a couple legislators this weekend at the Grizz game on Friday night, encouraging them to continue to support this, because in 2025, the funding is set to run out, but we want them to re-up. And we think we have that kind of support, but we're going to press on that. So, once you have submitted an application, you're put into a lottery. And so we're hoping that our Lotto ball gets drawn, and there's two Lotto balls, one for the elementary district and one for the high school district. And then when that happens, you get put into the queue. I know this is complicated, so there's currently districts that are receiving funding, and they might only have two FTE that they're looking at. So it might be a really insignificant amount, $7,000. We're looking at millions. And so when a district, after their four years of funding, they drop out of the queue, and a new school moves in, starting at the bottom. And so they expend until they reach, so you could end up in the queue two years from now, and there's only $50,000 left remaining to be allocated. That's all you get. So even though the maximum is there, so it's a little bit of a challenge in the way that it's structured, and maybe we can get some legislative relief on that as well. So that's kind of the nuance to it. One of the things, before I move on to talk real briefly about Advanced Opportunities, I'm going to put Barbara on the spot a little bit, but I'm going to, I'm going to kind of call myself out as well. At the beginning of the year, and as I'm taking in feedback and listening to staff and our administration about, you know, priorities and focus and the strategic plan, and what are we going to do, there's a lot of great work being done around teacher clarity in the district, where we're really focused in on how we're teaching students, and we're asking ourselves three really important questions about education. What do we want our students to know? What are we going to, how are we going to know that they've learned what we're teaching them? And then what are we going to do to accelerate that or to remediate that? Great work. And so I had our first admin meeting, and I said, our only focus is going to be, Stephanie? What did I say our only focus was going to be? Teacher clarity. And then I put a little, in really small font, and all these other things. And this is part of all these other things. But I wanted to have Barbara talk just a little bit about the teacher, and you'll see that in the application, that there's a lot of work around teacher clarity. And I'm going to let Barbara talk a little bit about how that interfaces with the work that we're already doing in this grant.
Thank you. So, teacher clarity is really the basis for building out competency-based learning platforms. And so it's kind of building the capacity of staff to really move towards that proficiency-based model that we are hoping to achieve through this transformational learning grant. You probably also saw a nod to that in our charter school applications as well, because that move to proficiency-based education is really about flexible learning and building opportunities for kids to move at a pace that matches their needs. So, teacher clarity is infused in our transformational learning grant as kind of building out the framework and capacity, that professional development side of the transformational learning. And so we do focus on those three questions. This first year, schools are really building clarity around what it means to have clarity in your instruction, what it means to be really deliberate in your practice, and to match those high-impact strategies to the instructional outcomes that you're hoping for. And then over the next couple of years, we'll be expecting some more evidence of teacher clarity in classrooms, and school leadership teams will be deciding what evidence looks like at each of their buildings, because some schools are further along than others. So we're really trying to empower the school leadership teams to take ownership of this professional development initiative. The other thing we've done with teacher clarity is, we have developed teacher leader cohorts. And so, rather than a top-down, this is what we want to see, it's building up the teacher capacity and growing it through teacher leadership. So really honoring the work of our teachers right now, and helping wrap them up with professional supports, like instructional coaching, learning walks, and we do monthly professional development activity. We'd love to see you in January. We're using an arts integration strategy. We're going to do wraps to learn about success criteria, so we're going to, it's going to be pretty exciting. A lot of wrapping's going to be happening. We're not going to be great, but if you want to have a good time, I think that's something that we'd love to share with you. So, teacher clarity is really that foundational practice that will help us leverage more transformational learning opportunities, and to help teachers really build out that competency-based learning. We visited a school last year in California that uses teacher clarity and has transitioned their high school to a fully competency-based program. And it was really neat to see how students could move in and out. And I heard Micah say, like, well, just because you didn't get your credits in those 90 days, should that be the end for you? And it's not at that school. You can always come back and get back into those competencies you've missed, and really actually learn and grow in each of those courses. And the way that they designed their remediation and acceleration was very flexible and based exactly on what students needed. And that's really that aspirational goal of transformational learning.
Thanks, Barbara. Next slide, and this is, this kind of dovetails a little bit. So it initially started with the Advanced Opportunities Grant, and we just asked the board to re-up that. And this just kind of talks a little bit about how that grant works and what the purposes are. And then the next slide actually goes into a little bit more detail on the funding, and the funding formula for it changed. It used to be that, on the elementary side, you could expect revenue of 3% of the quality educator payment for elementary teachers and 20% on the high school. And then the out-of-pocket expenditures versus district share was a 60-40 split. So if there were $100,000, $60,000 could be spent on out-of-pocket expenses for students, and 40% could be used to pay for things that the district deemed, like, it could be materials, supplies, staffing, whatever it was. And then through some advocacy, we were able to see a new funding formula where they upped it from 3% to 4.5% of the quality educator payment on the elementary side, which is $1.6 million. So that generates about $75,000. And on the high school side, it went from 30%, or from 20% to 30%. And then on top of that, you can take the total of the $75,000 and the $344,000, and you can actually apply another 25% from adult ed. So, there's an additional $100,000 hanging out there that we could actually pull out of adult ed to help support those advanced opportunities. So, and again, Advanced Opportunities supports CTSO-type clubs and organizations, but we also can use it to help defray out-of-pocket expenses for running start courses and supplies and labs, and we can buy welding gear, and we can do a lot of things to promote student success. So I just wanted to share that. So there's a new formula that goes with that. But that kind of ties into it, and that's on that, kind of more of the CTE side of things, whereas transformational learning is the big part. My last slide, or second to last slide, I should say, is just kind of, what are we doing now? Obviously, new information for the board. We're hopeful that you're interested in this. If there's one thing that I gather from Missoula and this community and MCPS is that this should be right in our wheelhouse for wanting to innovate and be ahead of the curve when it comes to these opportunities for our students and staff. So, we're just working on a lot of things. There's a lot of defining and time spent on this in the coming, in the coming year. But this application, due to the OPI, which Board of Public Ed actually is the one that approves it, and then we would be entered into the lottery, is due December, no, January 8th, January 8th. So that's why you're seeing it tonight. My last slide, I put a six-lane highway on here to kind of draw the analogy of what it's like to talk about transformational learning and the opportunities that exist. And the six lanes represent, there could be a slow lane, and there can be kind of the medium lane and the fast lane, but you also have to have some guardrails. It requires some direction and guidance from our administrative teams to be able to talk about what this has potential to be, what it looks like, and to be able to share out with the board. But there are going to be on-ramps and off-ramps on this six-lane highway, I guarantee you. There are going to be things that, we're going to take some risks, and we're going to look at it just through a new lens. But this is the opportunity that gives us to be able to do that, especially with the funding that's associated with it. And with that, Barbara, we'll answer all your questions. Just kidding, I can answer questions.
So, questions from trustees? Trustee Decker, and then trustee Witcher? I think that was, that was just a pencil. Okay.
Yeah, thanks for all of this detail, and thanks for sharing the full grant application. It's been really fascinating to read it, really inspiring, really encouraging. I mean, nine years ago, when I joined this Board of Trustees, did I ever think I was going to see a slide that laid out the industrial model of education and why that is obsolete? No, I did not. I did not think that we were going to be having this conversation. So I'm very, very excited to be having this conversation. Also, really excited that the plan that's in this grant is not a plan of exactly what we're going to do, but how we're going to decide what we're going to do collaboratively and collectively, and with a lot of engagement. And recognizing that doing that actually takes, like, work, it takes backbone, it takes, like, paid staff who are designated to do the work of having the conversation and creating, like, supported containers for those conversations to happen in, and that that's going to take time to happen well. So, I feel like that's a really, it's a really different kind of grant, because we're not choosing a thing that we're now going to, like you said, square peg into the round hole. That's all really great stuff. My question is, this is a $10 million grant application between the two districts. That's what it looks like over this timeframe, and I'm curious about the conversations that maybe have gone into, like, what this looks like if, via that very complicated levers and switches and pulleys and balls being pulled out of a, like, how, what we can do with what we can get, kind of? And how are we going to, like, in my view, we can't not do this, right? But how are we going to do what we can do around these conversations if we don't have all of the money that we're hoping for to contain them? That's my question?
Yeah, and I'll take the first attempt at this, and then if any of my trusted counterparts want to jump in at any time to help me answer, that'd be great. I think the conversation does need to happen. And whether we get the funding or not, I still think the conversation is there. And when I listen to our building administrators talk about their hopes and dreams for what's in their schools, or, I really want us to explore that. When I look at middle school and the model that we currently have, in some ways, I'm disappointed that our students don't have more opportunities in middle school to explore and learn and do hands-on activities. And it, I mean, we just, we fit within what we've constructed, and I think our students are missing out on some of those things. So, even if we don't have all of the money, I think there's still the conversation to be had, and then it's a way to figure that out. I look at the, you know, the process that Mrs. Courtney used at Big Sky High School, certainly not without certainly not without flaw or challenges or things, but really a group of staff and administration who are working together to try and say, "How can we make this happen?" We believe that this, like, if I was going to ask Jennifer a question tonight, I would have said, "Just give me the one sentence about why you're doing this. Why would you, why would you take on this extra responsibility?" Like, you could just do the status quo, and then no one would be any the wiser, but why would you do this? And we know it's best for kids. And if there's a byproduct of that, I think it's best for our staff. I want our staff to have enjoyment about coming to work and being able to have some autonomy in some of those things, and to be able to produce and create and do the things that they find passion and joy in. I don't know, I haven't run into a teacher yet who said, "I really love doing the S-Back test," or administering an ACT to 400 students at a time, or, you know, doing, jumping through any of the hoops that sometimes, you know, well-intentioned people kind of put out there for us. And so I just see it as an ongoing conversation and just part of my leadership role within the district, and hopefully with board support, to be able to continue to move the needle. Does that help?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Mercer?
So question and comment. The question is that, I mean, I see this grant, I guess along the lines of conversation, as like a planning grant. It is not, if I vote for this, I'm not, because I have some skepticism, I mean, to be very blunt. And it's unfair to maybe talk about some things in COVID, but there were some proficiency passes in COVID. And it's some day, like, we can't graduate people that don't know how to read. At some level, there's one and only one way to become a lawyer. It's to graduate from an accredited school and pass the bar, full stop. There's no other way. And so the guardrails, and so I'm, I have some skepticism. I'll vote for this as a planning grant. I'm not sure I agree with everything in here. And that's the conversation part, and I just don't want to say that I'm committed to modifying this or that or having that by voting for what I take to be a planning grant. Is that fair?
I would say that's a fair, fair assessment, but if I go back to that timeline and the process, you know, we're talking years to develop and to have those conversations, and there is a shared vision, and there is an opportunity to, you know, listen and reflect on what we're hearing. And so I certainly see that as being the biggest opportunity. I just want to be the person who helps facilitate that. And whatever that ultimately looks like, you know, will be, you know, kind of up to the board and to our staff as we move forward. I just want to be really mindful about it, that we don't just jump off wholesale and like, "Whoa, what happened?" And then come back five years later and say, "We probably should have thought through that a little bit more."
Any other trustee questions? I actually have one. Okay. Can you go ahead, and then we'll take mine.
My other question is that the rollout of these conversations and of these processes, that when we're thinking about doing something that is district, that goes across the district but also has a lot of investment, involvement, self-determination at the school level, over the past nine years, again, and longer, we've seen that there are some bumps in doing that, where schools, at different times, for different reasons, may have more bandwidth or capacity to engage in those conversations. And that is staff, but it's also parent body and community engagement in that school. And those have resulted in some real uneven experiences across the district over time that we've sort of seen play out in the kinds of, like, is this a program that, what's it going to look like long-term, right? So I guess my other thought around that is how do we, what's the thinking around staging or pacing or how different schools would engage, and where is equity in this thinking?
Yeah, that's a, a part of the process. And so when I think about it from a very pragmatic standpoint, I don't see this as a grant that we're using to hire a bunch of brand-new staff to come in and do some stuff. This isn't sustained funding. This is funding to infuse and help a district to make this shift from this industrial model to a more, you know, modern approach, for lack of a better word. The equity in it, and I talked a little bit about the, you know, the on-ramps and the off-ramps, and there's a slow lane and a fast lane. Process-wise, it's really going to be incumbent upon, you know, our team to work with our administration, who, again, with our teachers, I don't want this to be, Micah said, "Do this and then, and go forth." I want it to really be from the ground up. And so their capacity for something might change, but collectively, you know, you might pull together, as an example, you might pull together all of the fourth-grade staff in the district, and you might say, "Hey, we have some money to spend this summer on letting you come up with what you think is best for students from an experiential standpoint in fourth grade. Look at your curriculums. What are the things that you're doing? And then how can we come in and support that? Do we turn Mount Jumbo into an experiential center where students are coming in and bussing into a center to engage in, in their learning, you know, for a week at a time or a month at a time, or, you know, pick, like, whatever it is, I think the sky's the limit." I, you know, you talk about this, and you say, "What do you envision for your Disneyland when it comes to education?" And so that's where I think, you know, there's the power in the group and the, and the staff to be able to, to come up with that. That being said, when we talk about guardrails, there are some things that, you know, fundamentally, if someone were to come to me and say, "Hey, I have this great idea, but what we're going to do is, we're going to create this activity and this experience, but we're going to be really selective about who gets to participate in that." And that's a non-starter for me. Like, so when I talk about those guardrails, it's, we are creating something that is inclusive, that has opportunity for everybody, and that, it may not look the same at every school site, but it's, it's the thing that I, you know, that I hope comes out of all of this, too, is that our students all have those equal opportunities.
My question just had to do, it's a little bit related to his in terms of planning grant. If I look at the budget, almost all of that, of course, is for people to meet, to talk, and to do things. But then you finally get to the purchase curriculum materials, resources, and supplies. And I guess what I'm asking is, what is it that the state wants back in terms of proof that you used the money in a good way? And maybe they don't do that, but NSF does and NIH does. So how do we, how do we demonstrate, how do we assess our progress and demonstrate we've made it?
Yeah, I think the state is interested, and so one of the components of the grant is you have to report back every year, just like we do with the Advanced Opportunities. There's a report that's submitted, here's the evidence. They actually say, if you want to put pictures and graphs and charts and all that kind of stuff. And so that accountability piece will certainly be there. You know, as we look at any budget, about 90% is going into staffing, and I want to be able to honor our staff and their time and their expertise by being able to put, you know, a lot of the resources there. As each year goes on, we can adjust and amend the grant to fit wherever we're at from a programmatic standpoint. So there's no real limitations on how the money can be spent. But again, if you go back to that broad definition that they gave, a flexible system of instruction, that's what they're really going to be looking at. And they give some, you know, some pretty specific details in there, but it stays pretty broad. They don't, they're not trying to be super prescriptive, because it might look different in Missoula than it does in Broadus. And so they just want to honor that as well.
Any other trustee questions? If not, could we have a motion for the elementary trustees that we approve the elementary transformational learning grant application? Trustee Witcher and trustee Decker, any public comments on this elementary motion? Seeing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All elementary school trustees unanimous for the trustees present. Can we have a rec, sorry, a motion for the high school? Rob Wollek, trustee Decker, any public comment, any more board comments, any public comments? Seeing none, ask for all of the people that can vote for secondary recommendations to raise their hand. Unanimous for those present. Thank you. Moving on, because it is very late. The next one is to approve the urban and community forestry grant application. It's an elementary item, as I see it here, and the assistant superintendent will speak to this one.
Yeah, thank you. I think we can agree that we've heard enough of me tonight, so I'm going to ask that Mr. Solberg, talk about the grant application and then the request for approval by the board. So go ahead, Mr. Solberg.
Sure. Ty Solberg, Principal CS Porter. What we had earlier this year is we had two staff members initiate some beautification of our setting at Porter. We were one of the last schools to, to complete the Bond project in 2020. We got some nice additions there, but it wasn't a terribly large change for our school. Porter is, of course, borders reserve, and it's loud, and it's, there's noise pollution and air pollution. And so this past summer, we had two staff members want to get to work on our little tiny garden that we have at the corner of Central and Reserve. That's right below our old reader board. Sometimes over the course of the summer, if it's not upkept, it's, you know, weeds and grass, things like that. Well, that didn't necessarily pan out, because a lot of the, the community partners work with our elementary schools on their community gardens, but they said, "Wait, let's talk about trees." And so that actually grew. It wasn't, it wasn't shut down, and so it grew into kind of partnering with the DNRC to, to get, it's a $50,000 grant. I think it starts on page 103. I don't know if we've all read it or not, but over the course of five or 10 years, because we'd like to see how the trees set in and things like that, our staff members, one is a new school psych that came to us, it's your Kelly Jennings, that had been here previously and then went back east and came back. And our speech-language pathologist, they're neighbors in their offices, and they, it was really important to them and us and our kids to kind of beautify our setting. The trees, the few of them that are on reserve, will probably die off here soon. We're also thinking that the trees, there's a PowerPoint that I'm not going to share with you now, but it's got locations of these trees along our basketball court that could help maintain that, that pavement there, stop cracking, heat, rain, things like that. And then also provide some shade for some of our classrooms that, that face reserve, that get pretty hot in May, June, August, September. Not all the rule, not all the rooms have air conditioning. But there's also more benefits with these trees. The few trees we have, kids sort of gravitate to them. If they've got a spot to go, it can, it can stop bullying and harassment on the playground a little bit if they've got a spot to go. And so, you know, middle school playgrounds, or at least ours, are just kind of a big open-field square, you know? And so this would just be something to beautify and something to give it some shape and make it look like a school, and, and maybe not like a commercial building. So the funding source, which you have seen probably is the urban and community, it's called an urban and community forestry grant, and it's, the source is Inflation Reduction Act funds. It's on page 103. So I don't know if there's other questions, but again, these two employees that did a lot of work on it have talked about the mental health benefits for it, too. So, and the way sometimes middle school recess works is, is school is great in the morning. Everybody is locked and loaded and ready to go. When we hit that lunchtime at middle school, things start to get a little bit more exciting. So this could help those 45 minutes for us, for sure. So, and then just, it looks, it looks better for, for the public, for a school on reserve.
Any questions from members of the board, trustees? Could I have an elementary board motion to approve the urban and community forest grant Just trustee Hoffens and trustee Mercer. Thank you. Any comments from the trustees?
I would just say that to me, this is something that, some things if you don't get the grant, you shouldn't do. I think you should do this anyways.
Any other comments? Public comments? Seeing none, can we bring it to a vote? All elementary trustees. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, approve the Murdoch Trust Partners in Science Supplemental Award Grant. And Amy Shadok will speak to this one.
I would like to introduce a very patient Michael Yonkey from Sentinel High School. He received a Partners in Science grant from the Murdoch Trust, and he's going to share with us another opportunity he has.
Thank you all. I included just like very minor details, as you'll see in your very large packet for today. If you're curious more, I'm happy to give you more info about exact budget dollars. But yeah, as Amy said, the Murdoch Trust, so based in the Pacific Northwest, has a program called Partners in Science, where they allow middle and high school science teachers to apply for these grants, to work with a PI in a university lab for two summers. So I applied for that two years ago and spent the last two summers working in an organic chemistry lab at the University of Montana, learning far more than I could have ever imagined in two summers. Really got taken under the wing by the professor in charge of the lab and kind of all of his graduate students and undergrads. It was a neat experience to work alongside college students and have them teach me for most of the time that I was there, which was really fun. As a part of that, you present your research. So I presented a poster last January at a conference, and I'm in the works of preparing a talk for year two this January in San Diego, so not a bad place to be when you're in Missoula. We published a paper in a peer-reviewed journal last year on our work, and we're working on the same thing this year. The supplemental award, they allow you to apply for, essentially to buy equipment for your classroom, to take a piece of what you've been doing over the summer and do that with your students. So over at Sentinel, I teach both earth science and chemistry, and a part of that, that I'm kind of including there is growing crystals, to use that to think about how atoms are attracted and how those bonds are created. We can apply that both for mineralogy and how rocks form in earth and space science, and we can talk about that for bond energy and bonding in chemistry. So would be using those funds to purchase eight polarizing light microscopes, some really fun tools to manipulate those microscale crystals, and then use some not funds, but goodwill to go over to U M to then put some of those crystals on their X-ray diffraction facility to actually do some measurements over there. And this kind of also acts as seed info and seed money for an NSF grant proposal that that PI just submitted as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from trustees? Trustee Decker?
Sorry, I know it's getting late. I just have, this is more of a comment, I guess. Like, one of my favorite things in the world is when a teacher geeks out about what they love. Like, I love that so much. And I love also that what you are doing by going and working in the real lab echoes so much of what we were also talking about tonight, about what we want students to have the opportunity to do, and you're kind of doing that. It just makes me really happy. It like completely fills my bucket, makes it feel not like nine o'clock at all.
So can we have a motion to approve? And a second? Nancy Hoffens, a second. With that, are there any final trustee comments? Rob Wollek?
This says elementary, but should it be elementary and secondary, since it's Sentinel?
Yeah, it should just be secondary.
Yeah, secondary, yeah. I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of this application being approved? Unanimous. Okay. Two more topics. Approve enrollment for the early kindergarten program. Now, this one's obviously elementary, and our assistant superintendent will speak to it.
One second, please. Could we interrupt and ask if trustee Vogel got a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've been here, but I don't know if it's just.
It is in fact a secondary high school.
Oh.
Thank you.
I am ready, not to steal Trevor's thunder, but this is becoming a typical request to the board for approval.
Do we have, well, do anybody have any questions? Is a single student?
A single student, that's correct.
Okay. Do we have any comments from any trustees? Do we have any comments from any trustees? Questions? Any public comments? I'm sorry, I didn't ask for the elementary's board motion. Could someone make the motion? And then, yes, thank you, trustee Witcher, and the second trustee, Hobbins. Again, any comments? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor of this elementary motion? And it seems to be 100% of the elementary trustees. Final topic is really, I think, just information only about the social studies curriculum. Barbara Frank?
Yep. We have three social, or actually, there are four social studies texts that we've set out for review. We met with the social studies committee last year. You approved the high school. They moved much quicker, selected their texts, and we're ready to roll. But middle school had some changes in their standards, so it took us a little bit longer to land on those texts. So we have recommended a sequence in middle school, that is Montana and Native American history in sixth grade, the world till 1750 in middle, in seventh grade, and US history and civics in eighth grade. The committee chose two TCI textbooks for the seventh and eighth grade. They would like to use the State Montana Historical Society text for sixth grade. We've, we have the hardcover text for review, but that is all available online, and we don't necessarily have to buy that text. And then there's a supplemental text for eighth grade, that's the history of indigenous people for, for youth or for children, that it would be supplemental to our eighth-grade TCI textbook, which really just provides the perspective of Na, of American history from a Native American perspective, so that the teachers can really contrast the different perspectives, which is one of the standards that they need to address. So there are four books that are set for review.
And I see that they're going to be available from December 12th until January 31?
Yes.
Okay. I think we can adjourn at this time, if people are ready to do so. It's 8:52. Okay.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
I think Will Lane is quicker than I am.